Meeting is called to order. Can we have the roll? Danielle Bailey, present.
Greg Strike.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Aaron O'Quinn.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Jim Winchester. Jim Winchester. Seth Anderson.
Here.
Brian Looney. Brian Looney. Andre Spinelli is excused, and I believe Brian and Seth are, or Jim are on teams, just not on the bridge phone yet. Just a moment, please. We have a chat from Commissioner Winchester that he did try to speak in. Commissioner Winchester is letting you know we did not hear you. Commissioner Winchester, can you try speaking into the meeting again?
How about now? Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you. Thank you. Commissioner Looney, are you logged on to the bridge yet? We see that Commissioner Looney is logged on. However, let's see if we can get our mic up and running. Is that Commissioner Looney that just logged on?
Uh, yeah, it sure is.
All right. We will now count you as present.
Okay. Sorry, took a, I'm back in action.
Seeing as there's no minutes, moving on to our next item, disclosures. Commissioner Strike.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Gardner.
No disclosures.
Commissioner O'Quinn.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Krishna.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Winchester.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Anderson.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Looney.
No disclosures.
And I also have no disclosures. Moving on to item C2, informational item case 2021-0013. Can we have the report?
This is Holly Spoh Torres on the line. Can you hear me all right?
Uh, just, yes, we can hear you. One question, are we going to be hearing from staff first, or?
Um, I did not think so, but I do have Julie Mackler on the line with me. But I'll be giving the report, and Julie can weigh in as necessary.
I actually, so before we turn to you, I am going to turn to staff. I believe we have a brief intro, so I'm going to start with them.
Okay.
Yeah, hi. I'm, I'm just going to give a little brief intro before your presentation. So this is contact-sensitive solutions transportation project site plan review, or abbreviated as CSS concept report. This is for 120th Avenue, east of Johns Road and west of the Old Seward Highway. This is an informational item to make the Planning and Zoning Commission aware of project activities done to date. The next steps will be the design study report, followed by the plans and hand stages, which will contain more details about the project design and alternatives for the commission to consider. This project will upgrade 120th Avenue. It's within the Old Seward Ocean View Community Council. This road runs along Ocean View Elementary. Upgrades include drainage lighting and pedestrian facilities. The, the project team is here tonight. I'm here to take questions, as are the project team, and I'll give it over to the project team now to give a brief informational presentation.
Thank you so much. As I understand it, I just have about three minutes. Is that correct?
I believe you have 10 minutes. Is that, looking to staff for clarification?
Well, I'm going to take three. How does that sound?
Uh, that works. Great for me.
Okay. You've covered a little bit. We're just going to give a very brief update of what's going on with this project right now. Again, east 120th Avenue, between Old Seward Highway on the east and John Road, Johns Road on the west. 120th is classified as a neighborhood collector. The right of way is 60 feet, and the speed limit on the road is 25 miles per hour. Little bit of context and background for you. It's an existing strip paved road, and currently it doesn't meet the neighborhood collector standards that the MOA has. There's not adequate lighting, drainage, and pedestrian facilities. This is the highest priority project, and it has been for the Old Seward Ocean View Community Council. One of the goals is to move the street closer to a complete street, improving the roadway for all users and all modes of transportation. A little bit about the context of, it's, it's a pretty diverse land use around the corridor. You see the corridor right here. It's surrounded by PLI lands, which include the Memorial Park Cemetery and Ocean View Elementary School. There's single-family residential, triplex, duplexes, and then higher density residential. In addition, there's commercial towards the east, as well as industrial, both light industrial and heavier industrial. There is a railroad crossing. It's a double track, right here. Okay. We had a significant community outreach. Not only did we have public meetings as required, but we identified a stakeholder advisory committee that worked, worked with us to kind of confirm the issues that we identified: lack of bike and ped facilities, railroad crossing, railway, roadway and drainage conditions, traffic and safety, and lighting. These are some of the issues that we, we found as a project team, but then, again, they were confirmed by the stakeholders that we worked with. The stakeholders did include members of the Alaska Railroad DOT, as well as the principal at Ocean View Elementary. Again, lighting is an issue with the railroad crossing. It's a double track you see here. Pedestrians are forced to walk in the roadway because there's no pedestrian facilities, and as housing has increased in the area, there's been, and it's a connector connecting multiple facilities, including housing, to schools, to transit, to commercial, so people are always walking through this corridor. Sidewalks don't connect to 120th from Old Seward Highway. There's poor visibility all along the corridor due to dense vegetation. There's significant geometry challenges, and there's a mid-block crossing, but again, doesn't connect to any pedestrian facilities. And I included these last two images, just in case we need to have them for discussion. But at that point, just, I'm going to leave it there. We have, we're, we have significant support at this point to move the project forward from the community. As I said, it's the highest priority project for the Ocean View Old Seward Community Council. Thank you. If there's any questions, either myself or Julie Mackler, the project administrator, can answer them.
Thank you. Could you also state your name and spell it for the record, please?
Yes. Holly Spoh Torres. H-O-L-L-Y. S is in Sam. P-O-T-H hyphen Torres. T-O-double-R-E-S.
Thank you. Looking to our chat, and I don't see any current questions in our queue. Commissioner Strike.
Yes, I'm trying to figure out how to type that in. Thank you. And the question I have is, what is the anticipated traffic demand that is forecasted for 120th? And where I'm leading to is, I'm trying to ascertain the amount of traffic that will traverse there on 120th, especially leading into Johns Road and leading out to the Seward Highway.
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm going to answer briefly and then kick it over to Julie. But the short answer is, is there has not been a traffic analysis completed yet. The traffic analysis will be completed as part of the next phase, the design study report. Julie, do you have anything to add?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So, yes, there will be a traffic analysis. We're going to do an abbrevi, I don't want to say abbreviated, we're going to do a preliminary traffic analysis, and then we're going to wait for traffic to get more back to normal after COVID to do a supplemental traffic analysis. Right now, it's classified as a collector. Already, from our last numbers, believe it's over 2,000 cars per day. That would be what would require for this to get changed from a residential to collector, which happened a couple of years ago.
Is this a suburbia? I, I see, I'm very familiar with the area, and I believe this will be a wild success, and like, if you build it, they will come. And that means, and what I mean by that, obviously, is that this will become a shortcut. This will become an alternative to Clat Road. This will divert traffic away from much of, some of the Clat Road area for folks that are traveling from the south, for example, rather than from the north. And so my concern is going to be the congestion that we may feel there at the Old Seward Highway with those attempting to turn left onto the Seward Highway coming down 120th. And conversely, the amount of traffic that spills out onto Johns Road right there at the school, and this will become an alternative route for parents bringing their children, obviously. But, you know, and I appreciate the answer, the response I got, you know, we're going to look at this when traffic patterns return to normal. But even without that traffic pattern return to normal, I think that if that were in place today, I think you'd have quite a busy road.
There may be an increase. The area is fairly well built out. I don't think there's going to be a significant increase because of additional build-out. One thing to let the commission know is that the DOT is looking at a highway safety improvement project on the Old Seward Highway, including the industrial way, intersection, and 120th Avenue. And so they're evaluating to signalize industrial way, and that would also mean some type of treatment at 120th because they're so close together.
And then, the other thing to add to that concerning the other intersection, the Johns Road intersection, which is also a DOT intersection, PMNE is coordinating closely with DOT because likely adjustments will be made at the Johns Road intersection as well, to accommodate the things that you're talking about, queuing at the school, and that sort of thing.
Yes, we're going to be looking at a school crossing flasher evaluation, a warrant analysis, any school zone flasher warrant analysis. That will be part of the traffic study. Again, we might have to take the PED counts once school is back into full session and is recovered a little bit from COVID.
So the tentative concern is that there'd be backup, backup for, into the school that could spill out then onto 120th?
There already is some backup on Johns Road, and we face this with almost every single road project near a school. You need like a five-lane highway for about a 20-minute period in the morning and about 15-minute period in the afternoon to accommodate the school traffic. And so there's just some congestion. We don't know how much we can do with that, given the limited right-of-way. We do want to make sure that we have a safe walking route to school and a safe crossing for the kids. And so we'll be looking at the warrant analysis under the traffic's guidelines.
Thank you.
Commissioner Looney.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Actually, this is a little response to Commissioner Strike's, I guess, observations, and it seems to me like the link already exists. It, I think it's pretty well used by cars. The opportunity that I see here is, it kind of, could vastly improve the non-motorized link. For the bikes and pets. So that's why I'm looking forward to this. But I don't see a huge increase in car traffic because, like I said, they already have the connection with the, it's the.
Commissioner Looney, I believe your line has gotten slightly muted.
That's all I'm saying. Hello?
Before that's all you can say, Commissioner Looney, I'm going to ask you to repeat it because somehow the audio cut out about halfway through there when someone logged on and their line was not on mute, and it was creating an echo.
Yeah, it kind of hurt my ears, actually. So, but anyway, the bottom line is, the link already exists, and the cars, from what I can tell, I'm in this part of town quite a bit, too. I think that the opportunity for this roadway improvement is going to be felt mostly by the non-motorized users, walkers and bikers are going to use this much more than they do already. From what I can see, the cars use it to fairmount already, but it'll be those other people who are going to benefit the most. And I'll leave it at that. I'm looking forward to the project. I think it has great potential to be a great asset to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Looney. I would just like to echo your comments in that I've used this road a bit in the past, and I believe the pedestrian accommodations identified in the contact-sensitive solutions packet would be very helpful, and I look forward to seeing this project progress. Seeing no other comments in the queue, and because this is an informational item, I believe we don't make any findings on this, and so I would just like to thank the petitioner for their time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on to case 2021-0015. Staff, can we have the report?
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair Bailey. So this is another context, this is another contact-sensitive solutions transportation project site plan review, abbreviated as a CSS concept report. Note that the planner assigned to this had a conflicting meeting tonight, so I'm presenting on his behalf. This, again, is an informational item to make the Planning and Zoning Commission aware of project activities done to date. The next steps will be the design study report, followed by the plans and hand stages, which will contain more details about the project design and alternatives for the commission to consider. So this project will bring improvements along Fourth Avenue between E Street and A Street in the downtown area. These improvements include better traffic signals and lighting, and repaving and improved accessibility for the sidewalks, so it should work to improve conditions for pedestrians. The intersection at Fourth Avenue and C Street is adjacent to the Fourth Avenue Marketplace. This was identified in the 2007 Anchorage pedestrian plan as a conflict point. If the commission has questions tonight, I'm here tonight to take them, but the project team is also on the line to answer questions, and they will also give a brief informational presentation to summarize the concept report.
Thank you. Can we hear from the petitioner?
Absolutely. My name's Will Webb. I'm with KENI Engineering, project engineer for this particular project, and we've got Julie Mackler with Project Management and Engineering. She is the project administrator for this project as well. She's got a doubleheader tonight. This is the Fourth Avenue signaling upgrade project from E to A Street. The project is seen here on the screen. It runs from E Street almost to the Fourth Avenue. A Street signal was recently reconstructed this past summer, so our project will butt up to that project. The project was initiated out of a 2018 recon report that our firm conducted, which evaluated all of the traffic signals and lighting infrastructure in the downtown area. What we found was that 25% of items had a poor rating for one reason or another. In general, the lighting downtown doesn't meet current lighting standards, which means that there's too many dark spots, or, you know, there's various other issues that we would say it's not, not up to snuff. Fourth Avenue ranked first and third for need for rehabilitation, depending on which segment of Fourth Avenue we're talking about. Fourth Avenue from E to Cordova was chosen as the first segment, and that was the segment that was constructed this past summer. That was due to the condition of the traffic signal system in particular. The municipal traffic department had serious concerns about the reliability of that system, and so that caused that system to bubble up to the top there. Also, during the recon report, as we spoke with folks and maintenance people in the area, they reported that many, that there were, they had issues with the pedestrian light poles literally falling over when they hang flower baskets on them. That was a sign that our ratings were consistent with what was really being seen out in the field. So the planned improvements for this segment from E Street to A Street include replacing the traffic signals and the lighting systems. Our goal is to follow the downtown comprehensive plan guidance. This is all downtown cop plan was done in 2007, and it was a pretty exhaustive look at the downtown infrastructure and what the vision was for, for the future of that infrastructure. And so we're looking to follow that plan as much as reasonable there, since it was a pretty exhaustive effort to put that all together. That plan calls for the green pedestrian poles to remain in place and to use the acorn style lights that you see out there now, kind of the historic district feel. We'll have, so that'll be the pedestrian scale lighting, we'll have street lighting, we'll have new traffic signals. All of the pedestrian lighting will have banner arms and flower baskets to allow ADP to put the flower pots out and the banners out. In addition, since we have to dig up the sidewalk to put all of the new electrical stuff underground, we'll have to replace those to meet ADA requirements. In a lot of instances, the sidewalks are too, have too much cross slope, parallel or perpendicular to the road there, so we'll have to regrade the sidewalks, which means that we'll then have to repave the road to make all the grading work out. In addition, we're planning to add curb bulbs where possible and where they don't already exist along this segment. That generally means at the fourth and B Street intersection, since there's curb bulbs pretty much everywhere else. And then, this project will also include 1% for art, since that is the current municipal code. We're also looking at including street trees with curbing around the tree wells. This is also, again, out of the downtown cop plan. It's kind of similar to the tree wells that have been recently installed in, along Fourth Avenue. They've got the little curbs around them, they've got a little fencing on top of the curbs to prevent people from loitering there, but the curbing also keeps the chemicals and whatnot out of the tree wells, so it should improve longevity of the trees. As we develop the plans for this project, we're looking to incorporate lessons learned from the first segment of Fourth Avenue and just, you know, things that have been learned by the industry over time, such as raising the light pole foundations a little bit so that the bolts don't get corroded and have the falling over issue that we're seeing. Placement of equipment to make sure that we're allowing public space to be best used and not just littering it with cabinets and random things, but actually thoughtfully putting things out there all at once so that the public can get the best use of the space. And then also being very cognizant and diligent about our construction scheduling and phasing. The last phase of this, of this project that was constructed last summer, there, there wasn't a high density of businesses in that segment, and also COVID hit, so there wasn't as much street traffic. But moving forward, we're, we're going to, to make sure that the construction phasing and schedules work with, with their needs and the ebbs and flows of their typical businesses. The schedule is to work on preliminary design here early in 2021 with final plans late this summer, early fall, so that the project can advertise and the contractor can, can order equipment and supplies and get everything lined out so that they can start work in 2022. As we advance design and work more closely with the commission and, or the design commission, we will also be doing more targeted outreach to the local business communities. We have already talked to ADP and the Anchorage Downtown Partnership, the Greater Anchorage Inc., who is in charge of the Peronview and the Mushing District, and then also the Downtown Community Council. So we've, we've had some outreach, and we'll do more targeted outreach as, as time goes on. I've got contact information here for Julie Mackler. I'm sure you all have her information. And then our public involvement coordinator at KENI Engineering is Joanne Mitchell. Her information is here, and it's been part of the slideshow, I believe. You all have a copy of that. And that's the presentation I've prepared, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioner Strike.
Yes, thank you to the chair. I got one comment and followed up by one question. First, the comment. I note that you said that there would be 1% for art to be used on this project. I also note that the, in one of the paragraphs here, it talks about the Mushing District and the, and the desire to use branding and plaque information along the route to promote and identify the heritage of the dog mushing, et cetera. I guess my comment would be, might part of that art, 1%, be used to cover that type of activity as opposed to using the base budget? And that's just a comment. The other question I have is, this is considered the business district. Is that correct?
Yes, that is, through the chair, yes, so that's, that's correct. We've got B to A to the south, and B to B to the north. So we're on the central business district here.
And so my understanding is that in the business district, under the municipal code, bicycles are strictly prohibited to be riding on the, on the sidewalk, and they are absolutely forced then into the streets. And while I know that we're dealing with a limited amount of access and width and so forth that we're dealing with, and that, the problem I've seen downtown in this area is bicyclists are forced onto the sidewalk, and it competes with the pedestrians and so forth, because it's one of the safer ways, or they don't know, part of its education. Might some of the signage and so forth that's planned is to free up the sidewalks from that issue, dealing, competing with the tourists in the summertime with the bicycles on the sidewalk, and let's get them where they belong. But what's, part of its education and part of its signage. So I leave that both as a question and a comment.
Through the chair, Commissioner Strike, I appreciate that comment. We hadn't gotten to the point of detailed signage, but that's certainly an issue we can work with the traffic department on. I, it makes perfect sense to me that signs would help to educate folks, because I suspect most of the people on the sidewalks, they ride their bikes on the sidewalks, aren't necessarily aware that they're not supposed to be doing that.
And that's correct. And even the police department isn't aware that they're not supposed to be doing that as well. So the education can go all the way across the board. But, and the reason I speak to this is, I've got secondhand and firsthand knowledge of traffic accidents that have happened in the business district with bicyclists on the sidewalk cutting into traffic, and it, and when the police are investigating, they're not even aware of the own municipal laws and so forth that are in place in the business district is specifically noted for bicyclists. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I do not see any further questions in the queue. I would like to thank the petitioner for their time, and, yep, I believe that's it. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item F5. Staff, are we hearing from you? Are we going directly to the school board?
Uh, yes, this is Tom Davis with a brief report to the commission, and then we can go to the petitioner. This is case 2021-0006, the proposed ASD CIP, six-year CIP for 2021 through 2027. As every year, Planning and Zoning Commission is being asked to review and make recommendations to the Assembly and Anchorage School Board regarding the annual update to the Anchorage School District's capital improvement plan. This is outlined in the powers of the commission in 21.02.030C2 of the municipal code. This is a non-public hearing item. Planning and Zoning Commission received the report several days before a work session on January 4th. The ASD provided a summary presentation and fielded some questions from commissioners, and then additional questions emailed by commissioners were also responded to. And all responses are documented in, in the materials in attachment A, questions from commissioners and staff responses. The Anchorage School Board is scheduled to deliberate and take action on the CIP on February 16th. And so after the Planning and Zoning Commission deliberates here in January, and its final resolution approved and signed in early February, we will work with the school district to immediately forward the commission's. immediately forward the commission's final resolution and recommendations to the school board and Anchorage Assembly. The materials you have include a staff report from the planning department with three attachments. Attachment A being the responses to commissioner questions. Attachment B is a reference from the memo to applicable comprehensive plan policies. And then, Attachment C is more details about the 2040 student enrollment forecast models. In the staff memo, the planning and zoning, or excuse me, the planning department recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of this year's draft CIP to the school board and assembly and staff has offered some suggested findings in the memo. And the Anchorage School District's report itself is, of course, in the materials. That is the staff report and I am not sure if the school district has more to add at this point. I believe Tom Vennese is present. Thank you.
Yeah, this is Tom Vennese. I have no further comment, but I am available for questions.
Turning to the commission, do you have any questions for the petitioner, for staff? Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, thanks, thanks ASD for responding to our questions. Just kind of for information for our commission, you said that, does ASD do any long-term planning as far as student enrollment projections beyond six years or do they just look to the city's 2040 land use plan and other documents for that information? I guess the reason that I'm asking is just kind of a double check that, you know, current trends reflect current long-term projections and everything we're using is still appropriate.
So, this is Tom Vennese. Yes, we do. We have a longer six-year, you know, it goes beyond six years and we use our facility condition index to project out for the next, you know, 20 or so years. But in terms of looking at population growth, we rely heavily on and work closely with the municipality's planning department in developing that long-range plan to make sure that, you know, what we see as the projected future and how it affects enrollment is aligned with how the city or the municipality sees projections in the future for growth.
And one more question is about the school boundary areas and adjusting them to better balance utilization of adjacent schools. And you mentioned that, like some of the specific school programs and the open policy. Is that, just curious if that causes like a planning problem as far as student enrollment and planning for school replacements and renovations or even how many, like onsite modular buildings you need to accommodate the schools?
Tom Vennese again. It definitely makes it more challenging, but we found that open enrollment gives more options to those parents and allows parents and students to tailor their needs so they get the education they're looking for. So, saying that, it does come with some side effects and that being a little bit more disparities that you'll see between magnet programs or immersion programs or special schools that offer special programs. But by far, the open enrollment policy outweighs those disparities between enrollment numbers and projections.
Any other questions for the petitioner, for staff? Commissioner Strike?
Thank you. I guess I have a comment and then my comment is built on a bit of frustration after having listened to the school district reports now for eight years, eight consecutive years. And my consensus in looking back over this time, it's my perception that much of your projections seem to be built on hope. You hope to maximize the highest amount of student retention and/or student return or student enrollment as possible, whether to meet some other goal or agenda, budget and so forth. And my concern is that many times I'm listening over eight years, that that hope doesn't turn into reality. And when it doesn't reach reality, we don't seem to adjust, but we change the hope. And not seeing the strong planning that it takes to make tough decisions has never been promulgated, extrapolated or identified in any of these reports in eight years. And in my opinion, that's a, that's missing. And I understand that all we're doing is an advisory vote here that goes before the assembly. It's not our approval that you're looking for, but it's our comments. And I hope my comments resonate and are taken down in that we do actually take a vote because while I appreciate the hard work that the ASD has done on these reports, I think that after eight years and the same comments that I've made in different forms for eight years, and I may be off-base, but I think something has to change. Now, either my thinking has to change or these reports have to change, but these reports haven't been accurate. I want to say maybe one out of the eight years they have been. And therein lies my frustration. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Strike. I would just like to add, I've had, haven't been on the commission as long as Commissioner Strike, but I have noticed some of those same consistencies that he is referencing and I know both him and I have made these comments in the past, but I hope that it is heard again now and maybe there, these findings can be brought to us a little bit earlier so that the school district can actually have time to respond to our questions. I know in light of COVID, things got pushed back this year and I understand that can happen, but in the future, getting these reports to us sooner will allow our responses to actually be taken into account in the next round. Seeing no one else left in the queue, is there a motion on the table? I believe there's a recommendation on page six of this section of the packet. Commissioner Looney?
Okay, here it goes. So, in the case of 2021-0006, I recommend, or I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission approves the draft CIP presented to us with the findings presented on page six of the packet.
Moved by Commissioner Looney. I'm taking Commissioner Gardner's motion comment and the queue is a second. Anyone wishing to speak to the motion?
I'll start out here. This is Commissioner Looney. I know, we definitely heard some, actually, I have not been here as long as Commissioner Strike, but there has been a, I guess, a theme that we've heard quite a bit as far as the accuracy of the projections. You know, I do see on page eight of 16 where they, there's a summary of the accuracy of the projections, at least the one-year accuracies. It doesn't look so bad when you look at that, but I do appreciate the presentation they've made and I hope to get the approval of the rest of the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Looney. I would also just like to point out that I really appreciate Anchorage School District and Municipal Planning Department continuing their efforts to allow more time between the planning, zoning deliberations and the school board action. I think this will help us give the best recommendations possible to the assembly and I thank the school district for their time in preparing this. Call for a vote? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, I have a question. If we want to make recommendations for the assembly on things to consider, is that just in our findings that we state now or do we need to make a motion to give specific direction for them?
I am looking over to staff.
Yes, you could put suggestions in the findings or if you have a specific recommendation, you could place it in the recommendation itself for change, but if you have comments and general recommendations, you could place those in the findings.
I guess I'll just start out as maybe some findings. It would be to, you know, echo Commissioner Strike and Chair Bailey's comment on the enrollment and getting those projected numbers right. And then, the other would be to really look at boundary adjustments and how they can make schools more efficient, the utilization of schools more efficient. It sounds like from, you know, we're a planning commission, so from a planning perspective and planning for school replacements and upgrades, the open boundaries is problematic from getting the best use out of the schools. And I, just a personal thing would be that if the open enrollment really creates, I know it's opportunities for some students, but I don't know that it's opportunities for all students and if that's really that fair. But I guess I'll just leave that as findings unless anybody else wants to make a, or thinks that should be made into a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. I would like to add on to your findings and say that I additionally would like, along with looking at the boundary adjustments, would be particularly with the elementary schools, looking at if we should be reducing the number of schools. It seems as though not only are there disproportionate number of students in different school boundaries, but that with the elementary schools, there are, a lot of them are underpopulated and also looking at our projections, it appears that there's going to continue to be a decrease. So, I think that should be looked at more in the future. Seeing no one else in the queue, I will call for a vote. Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Krishna?
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
Commissioner Strike?
No.
And Danielle Bailey also votes yes.
Could I speak to my, could I speak to my vote, please?
Yes, you can, Commissioner Strike.
And the reason I voted no is that in eight years, this has overwhelmingly gone with unanimous vote from the, from this commission to the assembly. And this is the person I recall in voting no on this. And my purpose for voting no was to ensure that possibly the assembly takes note of the no vote and takes a look at the findings, the notes and the comments that have been derived through this setting. And that is my sole purpose for having voted no, otherwise it would have been a yes, but I want to make sure our voices, that these comments are being heard and that there's an asterisk beside this as it moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Strike. I would also like to thank the school district for their presentation today and staff as Sorry, and I forgot to note that that motion does pass. Moving on to case 2020-0069, procedural question for staff, should we open the hearing now or after your report? I believe now, correct?
Yeah, now.
Okay. Is there a motion from the commission to reopen the public hearing? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Strike, do you have a question?
Yeah, with that motion on the floor before we take a vote, I had a procedural question that if we're opening up the, if we're going to vote to open up the public testimony, when I went through the packet, I did not see where the notice had gone out to the public that this was now going to be reopened. Maybe I missed it. And I note that there's a new site plan being presented and therefore, did the adequate notice for the 30 days or whatever the number of days to the public get presented? Because in science, if they're going to present a new plan, a new site plan, then adequate notice needs to be made to the public. I'm not sure I've seen any indication that the adequate notice was provided to the public.
Through the chair, thank you for the question, Mr. Strike. The notice followed the normal public hearing notice procedure. The notice, this was treated as if it was a new case and anticipated that everyone that testified before would have the opportunity to testify again because the application has changed significantly. So, the public hearing notices were mailed, new signs were posted, the new application and site plan were posted to the webpage. This is been shared with the public as a new public hearing from the beginning.
And while I can respect the comment, thank you. When I go through my package, I usually see a copy of the posting, I see a copy of the number of notices that were sent. I see that information in the packet. Did I just miss it? Is it there and I didn't see it?
Thank you again for the question, Mr. Strike. That is not in, that is not in the staff memo. Please allow me to provide that information and the sufficiency of notice right now.
Well, what I'm looking at is that the packet that I have is like an inch and a half, almost an inch and three-quarters thick. And are you telling me that it is not in there?
Let me just continue with what I was going to do, which is to say that in the case file, 106 public hearing notices were mailed on December 21st, 2020. So, public hearing notices were mailed December 21st in advance of this public hearing, 106 of them.
That's wonderful, but I usually, I'm usually able to read that in my packet. This is, this is one of the first times I can ever recall that I'm not seeing that in my packet, which you say this is being handled just as a brand-new presentation. It's not, it's not being handled the same. Our packets are incomplete.
You know, it's difficult sometimes to hear through the audio. Mr. Strike?
Can I interject real quick? I believe it's on page 196 of our packet.
Thank you.
Yes, I agree with you, Commissioner Strike, it's not where it normally is. Any further questions?
No, that is not, that's right, that's not where it normally is.
Any further questions for staff before we proceed with the motion? Seeing no other questions in the queue, is there a motion to reopen the public hearing? Commissioner Krishna, does your motion still stand? Just for the record, by chat, Commissioner Krishna has moved to reopen the public hearing, and Commissioner Winchester has seconded the motion. Are there, I guess we'll do a full vote. Commissioner Strike?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Krishna?
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. The public hearing is reopened. I'm going to state the procedure by which the public may speak in a public hearing. The procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meeting is as follows. After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representative groups such as community councils or PTAs will receive five minutes. Individuals will receive three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning, Zoning Commission takes, except recommendations to the Assembly which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the Clerk's office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for appeal is required at the time of filing. Staff, can we have the report?
Yes, Chair, thank you. Matanuska Electric Association is requesting conditional use approval for a utility substation in accordance with Anchorage Municipal Code 21.03.080, conditional uses. On June 1st, 2020, the Planning and Zoning Commission postponed this case in order for the project team to address the concerns that were expressed by the public and the commission at that meeting. The staff packet on page 199 of your packet includes all of the public written comments that were received for the previous version of the case. While they may not apply to the current site plan, it was best to include them here as reference on the first version of the application, even though it was a different iteration of the application. Page 194 of your packet has a public comment in support of this application. Late public comments were received opposed to this application, and that's in a supplemental packet. This revised site plan shows a 70% smaller substation than what was presented on June 1st. With the changes from the previous site plan, the project is now a critical replacement of the existing substation instead of an upgrade project. The current site plan shows substantial landscaping in the area that had been planned for expansion of the substation. The previous site plan showed a single row of trees on the north side of the site, but this reduced footprint of the substation allows for eight rows of trees, including 72 additional trees. Page 12 of your packet shows the, the old site plan, and page 73 of your packet shows the new proposed revised site plan. So if you flip to 12 and 73, then you can see the sort of the before and after. The planning department is recommending approval of the application. Planning Department is recommending approval, recommended approval of the previous application, subject to six conditions of approval. The staff analysis is enclosed from the, from the previous application, and the minutes from the last meeting as well. The department finds that the smaller design of this revised site plan continues to meet the standards of approval for a conditional use. The department recommends the same six conditions of approval, but the vibration and light levels were lowered given the substation transformers located further away from the property lines. The department's recommended conditions of approval are on page two of your packet, conditions one through six. And that is all I have for comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the staff? Commissioner Strike?
Thank you. Is the, to the staff, thank you to the chair. Is the current property the same size as what was originally proposed, or has there been acquisition of property taken place to accommodate this new plan?
Thank you, Mr. Strike. The application involves the same area and properties as before. So, the public hearing notices that were mailed say total area 4.6 acres. That's because the two parcels involved with this case add up to 4.6 acres. But not to confuse anyone, the actual project area involves Lot 1 and only 30 feet of Lot 93, and that's for landscaping. The approved replat of these two parcels has not yet recorded, which takes 30 feet of Lot 93 that becomes consumed by Lot 1. This application is not taking over all of Lot 93, as the public hearing notices might suggest. And thank you for the question.
What is, any follow-up, please? What is the intent, or do you know the intent of what the balance of the property is going to be used for? You mentioned for landscaping. Is that the only use of that property allowable will be for landscaping?
So, Lot 93 has a home on it, and 30 feet of the backyard is being consolidated into the substation lot. And that's because of the extensive landscaping that will be placed on Lot 1. It, landscaping from the substation lot goes into 30 feet of Lot 93, but once it's replatted, it'll all be on, all within Lot 1's boundaries.
So to clarify, the MEA only procured 30 feet of that, or they bought the whole lot of which they're replating? Who owns the home?
You can ask the petitioner about their plans for the home.
Okay. Because my concern is growth creep. What is there to prevent if they were to come back in five years and want to expand to what the original planning may have been for the height with the development and so forth of the substation? What's to prevent, what's in place to limit this whole site from just becoming overwhelmed with a massive substation, somewhere in size that we see now, that they, they used the Lenon and Mall Road as an example?
Through the chair.
That's my concern.
Mr. Strike, thank you for the follow-up question. So, the conditional use application today involves the site plan. It's specifically tied to the site plan that's before you. You can ask the applicant about the future plans and ownership of the neighboring lot, Lot 93, that has the home on it. Any change to the site plan that's, an application that's proposed tonight, any change whatsoever, has to come back before the commission. There'll be a new community meeting, new public hearing, all of these things. So, to answer your question as directly as I can think of to say it, if the Matanuska Electric Association wanted to expand the electrical substation either within Lot 1 or onto the lot, neighboring Lot 93, then this would come back before the commission as a public hearing.
This time hopefully before they cut down any trees.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes, I have two questions. A follow-up to Commissioner Strike's. What, what's the status of the plat that would make the west boundary adjustment? And do we need to make a conditional of approval that they have successfully completed that replat before the CUP is approved?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. There's not a need for a conditional approval. It's very close to recording. They have an approved preliminary plat that, that's something that the, the department considered. It's not necessary.
Okay. And second question, I think in the first plan, they were substituting some of the landscaping for a decorative fence. Is that being used at any spot on the new site plan?
Please direct that question to the, the project team about the fence and the landscaping.
Sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner Krishna?
Yeah, could you speak to any limitations on lot coverage that would be present on the site? And then, could you also speak to the height limitations on the facility?
Through the chair, Commissioner Krishna. I'm pausing because I haven't had those questions before. Lot coverage in the R6 district, I'll flip to that. The lot coverage, maximum percentage lot coverage in the R6 district is 30% for utility substations. The height here is listed for homes 35 feet, but for utility substation, it's, I believe it's different. I have to try and look at height exceptions in Chapter 6. Let me flip to that.
Thank you for looking that up. And then I, I do just also want to know what the lot coverage percentage is for this sort of revised site plan, if that's at hand. Thank you.
This is interesting. So, in the dimensional standards in Chapter 6, it says the allowed height for high-voltage transmission towers is addressed by a different section. It's the utility substation section. So, I'd have to flip to that. But the takeaway point here is that utility substations are not subject to the same height as a house. If there's an exception, there's a special section on high-voltage power lines that would be applicable. Can you remind me of your, your other question?
Yeah, with just what the lot cover percentages for the revised site plan?
Yeah, I don't know the, the lot coverage of the substation with this new revised smaller site plan, but it is significantly less than 30% lot coverage. When I've seen, looked at an Asbilly drawing of 30%, something exceeds 30% lot coverage, it looks like the, almost the entire property is covered. So, that's not an issue here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions in the queue, can we hear from the petitioner?
Hello, Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, thank you. My name is Julie Estee. I'm the Director for Public Affairs and Strategic Initiatives at MEA. Thanks for the opportunity to address the commission about the Justine Park Substation Replacement Project. Also in attendance on behalf of MEA are Juan Lee from R&amp;M Consulting, MEA Project Manager Haley Seal, and MEA's Director of Engineering, John Sinclair. At the last meeting in June, concerns were raised by Commissioners and the public about the project to confirm it was consistent with the character of the neighborhood. And you also urged us to work with the local neighbors to come to a resolution on the design. Since that time, we were able to meet with the local neighbors on-site and made numerous other offers to meet in-person or Zoom, either as a group or individually. We also attended several Birchwood and Chugiat Community Council meetings to hear additional feedback and provide information. MEA listened to the concerns and made real and significant changes to the design, including a reduction of the initially proposed footprint by 70%. We significantly scaled back the project from an upgrade of the existing substation to only a replacement of the aging equipment. That allowed us to shrink the footprint by 70% while still remaining compliant with updated electrical and environmental standards, municipal codes, and MEA's development standards. We filled in almost that entire reduced space with vegetative buffer to reduce, to further reduce the impact. The local area will take a small hit on reliability with this new design, but MEA felt like it was a fair trade-off based on the community's feedback. One piece of feedback we could not accommodate was moving the substation to an alternate location, since our detailed analysis of the proposed site showed that there would be more direct impact to a new set of local residents than the proposed site in front of you. The substation is at the end of its useful life and has to be replaced. Updated codes require more space than the substation built 60 years ago. MEA is committed to replacing it with the least impact to residents, especially those who have not already chosen to live near a substation. This design significantly reduces the visual impact of the substation, and we believe accommodates all concerns raised by Commissioners. And we appreciate your consideration. I'll now pass it to Juan Lee, who will go over a 3D graphical video. Juan?
Yes, thank you, Julie. Through the chair, Commissioners, my name is Juan Lee. It's spelled V as in Victor, A-N, and last name's Lee, L-E, for the record. Like Julie said, I'm with R&amp;M Consulting. I'm a planner, and I'm assisting MEA with this conditional use permit. And for my presentation, I'd like to share my screen. Okay, so I'm going to show you two very short video flyovers. One is existing conditions, about 30 seconds, and then the other one is a video, 3D model to scale video that you have stills of in your Commissioner's packet. So, this is the existing substation, and we are approaching the substation from the east, Deffus Street. As you can see, there's the adjacent lot, Lot 93. This is looking at the existing substation from the north. You can see there, to the south boundary, there are existing transmission lines and existing vegetation that we are keeping as part of the buffering, the natural buffering for the project. The transmission lines are actually shorter than the vegetation that's existing on the south side. This is looking from the south to the north. Again, on the south side, you can see the transmission lines, oh, excuse me, and that one's done. And then I will show you a, this is a 3D model. Like I said, it, it takes the two-scale engineered design drawings and uses aerial photography imagery to create a scaled model of what the substation will look like shortly after construction. This was something that the residents, adjacent residents, asked MEA to do so that they can visualize what this new replacement substation will look like compared to the existing substation. Everything you can see in here is a scaled model of the drawings you have in your site plan packet. Again, same approach as the drawn footage of the existing conditions. This is Deffus Street, looking towards the substation. The fence, the 12-foot fence is there to encase the substation for safety. This is looking from the, the north to the south. As you can see, everything that isn't substation replacement As you can see, everything that isn't substation replacement is landscaping. We're going to have one more view to, looking from the east to the west, and then the south to the north. And this is shortly after construction, so the trees will be between 8 to 10 feet. And then I'd also like to show this, this other drawing, which you have in your packet, but it shows the proposed site plan that was submitted to you on June 1st, and on the right, and then to the left is the what's before you tonight, the proposed substation that has been redesigned, critical replacements, smaller footprint, and anything that isn't substation is landscaping to address the requirements of Title 21, as well as the concerns from the Commission and the residents about buffering, landscaping, so that the substation is adequately screened from adjacent streets and residences. Thank you. Also, I'd like to save our remaining time for rebuttal. We also want to say that we accept staff's recommendations and the conditions of approval for the project.
Thank you. Thank you. You have 4 minutes and 4 seconds remaining for rebuttal. I believe we have a question in the queue from Commissioner Streak.
Thank you. So for clarification, I appreciate the video, that is helpful, and as I understand it, that video, to reiterate, is a projection of what the redesign will look like. That is correct?
Through the chair, that is correct.
So this new, this revised substation, remodeled substation, but it will not look anything then like what was originally proposed, similar to O'Malley Road. Is that correct?
That is correct. Through the chair, that is correct. Commissioner Streak, we did use the O'Malley Substation as the example in the previous project that you heard on June 1st. However, it is redesigned, and that is no longer the substation we're modeling.
And with you in the packet again, you did appear to have outright bought the lot adjacent, as opposed to just buying the 30 feet. So you bought the whole lot, you bought the home, so MEA owns the home now, adjacent to the property site, correct?
Through the chair, yes, that's a good question. So MEA has a purchase agreement to purchase the lot next door, which is Lot 93 currently, so that the 30 feet could be used as part of the substation lot, Lot 1, that you see before you, to deal with the buffering and the drainage, to ensure that all of that would be on-site. The future uses, and this is to answer a question that was asked to staff earlier, is that that residential property will remain residential. And, sorry, one clarification, that purchase has been completed.
So, and the intent is to remain residential, so putting a restriction on that piece of property for no future development would not, would not be an issue with you, with the MEA?
Can you clarify your question? Are you asking that we would put a restriction on that residential lot for future MEA expansion? Is that...
Correct. You said it was going to be used for residential, it's maintained as residential, and that was the intent, so is there an issue if there were to be a restrictive covenant or restrictive, whatever, whatever the city here, whatever we can do here, that would restrict any further future expansion into that property?
Yes, there would be no issue from MEA on that issue.
Okay. I yield, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes, thank you. I have a question for the petitioner. Actually, the figure you have up there is great. Actually, the left side of it, the redesign, is very similar to our staff packet, I think on page number 73, where it shows the proposed layout. It's kind of hard to make it out there, but I think I see that the outline of the existing fenced, the existing substation is there in the bottom of that figure. Is that right?
Yes. Through the chair, that is correct. That is the dotted line, and the figure is the existing.
So actually, it helped me a lot to kind of get a, just a visual, basic understanding about the, of the overall proposed footprint of the, I guess it's kind of cream-colored area on your redesign, is really probably less than twice as wide, the distance east and west, and a little more north and south, but it's really about twice as big as the existing footprint, but it's not near as big as the one, the original design we saw back in June. It's much, much more reasonable. And it appears that the proposed switchgear facility is just north of the existing facility, so they can build it, I guess, in place, my guess, but proportionally, it's not that much bigger than what we have out there today. Am I reading that right?
That is correct, Commissioner. Looney?
Thank you, Juan. I'll stop there.
Commissioner Krishna?
Thank you. Yeah, a lot of the initial public feedback we got was on the lighting and noise and sort of vibration impacts of the site, so I'm wondering if you have updated information about the redesigned site plan and what, how the lighting, noise, and vibration will differ from the current facility that's there?
Through the chair, yes, that's a good question. We did reduce the noise and the vibration, and the lumens for the lighting are the same. I'm just, it's in your packet, and I just want to make sure I have the numbers in front of me. So for, we, because the substation is quite a bit of a smaller footprint, 70% smaller actually, it is also a greater distance now to the existing residences to the north, south, northeast, northwest. The, the previous decibels at, was 56.4 to the north, and now they're 53.57. And just for a comparison, it's hard to understand what that really means, but most of us have dishwashers, and the one I have is considered a quiet one, and it's at 48 decibels. So that's this kind of comparison. The noise to the northern boundary is at 53.57, if that is helpful to anyone. It's helpful to me. The eastern boundary, the, the previous decibels were at 51.31, and now we are at 50.08. These, this analysis was done after the redesign. The southern boundary is at 53.16, and it's a little bit quieter than the previous, which is at 53.74. And then on the western boundary, the, it is, it was at 59.11, and now it's 56.50. And this doesn't include the noise that would be canceled out by the 12-foot fence that is going to be around the perimeter of the redesigned substation. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Krishna?
Yes, I just have a little follow-up, which is, how does that differ from the current decibels for the current facility?
Oh, what it is versus the current, sorry, let me look that up for you, make sure I have it. While I'm looking at what the current decibels are, let me see if I can, want to make sure I get that number right. I want to say 53, but I don't want to quote you the wrong number, so I might have to look that up and get back to you, that, if that's good. I do want to address the question.
But in, just in general, that, if it is right around 53, just to clarify, you're saying that there will not be a greater noise impact due to the new facility?
That is correct, and it's for the number of reasons I talked about. It's the same, the transformer is in the same place, but the substation is, is further away from the residential areas to the north, the fencing, as well as all the landscaping. And because it is smaller, it is not going to be as close.
So just to clarify from what you're saying, for both lighting and noise, there's not expected to be increased impact to nearby residences at that sort of property line? Is that also true for the vibrations?
Yes, and actually, through the, I actually have the numbers now, so I can, so it's, so the noise levels currently for the existing transformer, which is obviously old technology, is 42.3 feet at, at the northern property. So that answers your question. I'm sorry, what was your second question?
Okay, so there is an increase of about 10 decibels there at that property boundary?
Yes.
Okay. And then my, my last follow-up, and thank you to the chair for allowing me to ask so many follow-ups, is just about the vibration.
Oh, your question is on the whether the vibration is the same or more or less, right?
Right, yes.
Okay. Through the chair, I may have, oh, sorry, yes, I just found it. It looks like there is no change in the vibration between the existing and the proposed redesigned substation replacement.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes, thank you. I've got questions on, on two topics. The first is with respect to the towers that are present in the new design, and I'm wondering if you can just quantify, and I apologize if it's somewhere in the packet that I didn't see spelled out, but compared with the existing structures and the new design, what are the kind of number of new towers that would be visible, and what are the heights, and how do they compare with what's currently there?
Thank you. Through the chair, I'm going to have either John Sinclair, MEA's Engineering Manager, or Haley Seal, the Project Manager, to answer that question, and they're both on the line.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, this is Haley Sow with MEA. To answer your question, so there is one transmission getaway structure that's existing, and that's about 45 to 50 feet tall, and then the transmission getaway structures that will be included in the redesign, there will be three 60-foot structures.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question relates to the alternate sites, and I, I know we went through this a little bit in June, but I saw that there were additional comments provided, and you mentioned in your presentation that those sites had more direct impact to residents than this site, and I was just wondering if you could elaborate that on a little, a little bit, both in terms of, you know, exactly what that impact would look like, and also kind of sense qualitatively of what that looks like. Did I lose the line here? I'm not hearing anything.
I'm not hearing anything either. Did we lose the petitioner, perhaps?
Oh, sorry, through the chair, yes. I think Julie Estee is going to take that question on, and I'm going to show you on the screen, it's in your packet at the beginning of our narrative, but the relocation study and the revisit of the relocation study. Julie, are you supposed to get on?
I am on now, yes, thank you. Commissioner Gardner, through the chair, thank you for the question. The, to move a substation, it's kind of like moving the heart somewhere else in your body. You have to not only move the physical location, but you have to move everything that's connected to it, and so it needs to be along a corridor that both connects in with a transmission line, but also the feeders that come out of the substation and connect in to the local homes and businesses also need to be moved. And so the impact of the substation to, of just the location of the substation is not what the concern is. The concern is the clearing and impact to the community, to various parcels along the way as you connect those feeders from the state, substation to their current, to their current location. And the routing study took a look at four different routes for those feeders, so there's three existing feeders, and then there's one planned feeder, so that means four different ways that the lines have to get from the substation back out into the community. There is options to go down a few of the roads, there's options to go down the existing transmission line. However, when that transmission line right-of-way was secured, there was an attempt to have distribution underbuild attached to that, and several of the parcels refused that, so we were only able to obtain transmission-only right-of-way. So there were definitely already several homeowners who did not want that impact to their homes. Along some of the other corridors, there would need to be 20 to 30-foot clearing of the easement, and, and if you look at that detailed analysis that was done, you can see that some people would have their entire buffer to the road completely removed due to that clearing. So again, there's a pretty detailed study in there that we hired somebody to do because initially we were taking a step back to see if there were any other possible sites. This one was selected as a definite high possibility, but once we had the detailed analysis done, which you can see there were numbers given to their, to each parcel, depending on what was lost from, whether it be buffering or view shed, we came up to, that there was a significant impact to these other, to these neighbors as well. And, and also within these other sites, in some of our, because we expanded the notice and notification concentric circle, some of these folks may have been part of that notice, but that was for the previous substation. None of these people have been involved in public comment or public testimony about how they would feel about that, nor were they involved in the, in the discussion with the community council about moving the site and having this impact on their land. So based on our analysis, we decided, let's stick with the solution that has the least community impact, and impacts people who have already chosen to purchase a home and build homes near a substation and adjacent to a substation property with the existing parcel. And Juan or Haley, do you, either of you want to add to that?
Yeah, thanks, Julie. This is Juan Lee, and I have on the screen in front of you, it's on page 34 of your packet, and then the actual feasibility study is on page 120 of your packet. But what I have before you is the first site, which would have 17 property owners impacted by clearing the area for proposed wires if we were to move it. I'll just talk briefly about what you're seeing here. There is, the yellow is the existing park substation, the subject property before you tonight. The purple, the diagonal line, is the existing transmission line, and then this is the green, this green property is what, is the subject property to potentially move the substation. The white is, is what would be required to add new transmission, new connecting wires and poles, and the clearing that would go along with it. So 17 homeowners would be impacted, there would be easements that would be required.
So can I, sorry, just a quick clarifying question as we're looking at this. So that white is, is scaled to represent the physical clearing that would need to take place on that map?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and then to also add, the existing substation does not need easements from any of the adjacent residents currently, but to move it, we would require 17, or we would ask 17 property owners for easements. And then the second option is 22 property owners would be impacted by clearing. There's existing substation. The white, again, is the clearing that would be required to add new line, so this one has a greater impact. The orange is all the property that would be impacted. And then the third option, C...
Okay.
Yep, so if that's helpful.
That is helpful, thanks. I didn't, I didn't appreciate that the white was representing actual clearing. Are there diagrams similar to this somewhere in the packet that applies to that other property that was considered, property 2 on the other side of the Glen Highway?
Yes, so that was part of the 2015 feasibility study, and that entire feasibility study is in your packet on page 120, starting on page 120. So this, this site here, the Upper Bowery Lane in the Tariqa, this is, the residents asked MEA to relook at this site, thinking... Bowery Lane in the Tarrica, the residents asked MEA to relook at this site, thinking that, to revisit the site, thinking it might be a more feasible site if there were less impacts, but our analysis, or the analysis that was done by a third firm showed that there are greater impacts, including construction, temporary construction, and then the long-term impacts of losing all their clearing and buffering from the roadway as well as from other neighbors.
Okay, thank you. And so if I understood you correctly, the reason this most recent application has these diagrams that focus on that particular property, that was kind of the one that had been highlighted by the residents and discussions with them for further consideration?
Correct. They had asked MEA to move it to here, and so that was the additional analysis that was done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah. Is there a, in the rendering that you provided, it had the trees as they're planted, I guess during construction, do you have like a number of years until they're, like a 25 or 30-foot tree that would actually offer some screening?
Through the Chair, yes. So your packet has renderings that show after 15 years after construction, and then 15 to 30 years after construction. The trees that were selected are expected to grow at least a foot a year based on our conditions, and they're all conifers. But you have a video, if I can answer your question, Commissioner Anderson, with a 30-second video that shows what the trees would look like and the substation would look like after 15, 20 years.
While you're pulling that up, I had another question about if you've chosen all of, like, the equipment you've chosen and containment is, like, does the best for noise reduction, or if there's any other things that you could do so that there is no net increase in noise over the existing condition?
Through the Chair, I think I'll have John or Haley answer that question.
Yeah, this is John Sinclair, Director of Engineering at MEA. The numbers that we're providing are at full load, and assuming no fence, we're projecting it'll be significantly lower at the loads that we will actually see. And new transformers tend to be much quieter than the older ones, and we also are requiring a higher efficiency rating, which will also reduce the noise level. So while that number we provided in the 50, 50-decibel level is the highest anticipated number, most of the time it will be at a load that's half of its capacity or even less, which means a significant decrease in the decibel level. But we do try to get as efficient as possible with these units. It just costs us less and costs the members less to make it efficient, so this is going to be a higher efficiency unit, which will give the lower decibel. So we've definitely looked into that because that's cost savings for everyone, and that's one of our goals. So it is, we did look into that, and we are trying to reduce that. And that number that we provided, again, was at the maximum capacity, which we do not anticipate very often. It should be actually significantly less during normal operation.
All right, thank you. And I have one more question for staff, and is there a requirement in the code that has like a survival rate of the required landscaping, or is it just that required landscaping is there after or at completion of the project?
Through the Chair, Mr. Anderson, the landscaping that's shown in the site plan is a requirement and would be required to be replanted if it didn't survive.
Thank you.
Through the Chair, I have my answer to Commissioner Anderson's question, so I would just like to show this video for 30 seconds. So this is 15 to 30 years after completion, and the vegetation has grown, and this is the same view from Stephis Street looking east to west.
Thank you.
Commissioner Strike?
Yes, thank you for, thank you to the Chair. Two comments and questions. One goes back to a follow-up to Commissioner Anderson's question, I believe, regarding the survival rate on the replant, and the comment from staff was that there would be a requirement to replant trees or landscaping that died. Did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
And I guess I would push back a little bit because that's directly contradictory to the testimony that we heard back in the South High project that was a direct concern from the neighbors, and the landscaping had died, but that the school district was not first or not, that they didn't have to replant their dead landscaping. So I guess this is a selective enforcement, but I'm just gonna, I want to go on the record that the, it's a follow-up on Mr. Commissioner Anderson's comment, that this landscaping will be required to have a survival rate, and that's on the record here in this testimony if and when this gets passed, if this were to get passed. My other question is to the petitioner, and as this is a new public hearing, and, you know, it's kind of a bit of a loaded question, but you've been out there, you've talked to the community, you've talked to homeowners, you've been active now in there for the last six months. What do you expect to hear this evening in the public testimony regarding the most critical comments about your new plan? What has been, what's been the pushback? What's been the most critical comments about this revised plan that you've heard come back to you?
Thank you. This is Julie Estes through the Chair. I think what we have heard most from the community when we talked to the residents, the local residents, also when going to the Birchwood Community Council, was to try to move it somewhere else, which I think is the very natural reaction. They were all, at least in the comments to us, were understanding that this needed to happen, but they just wanted it to happen away from their residences, which I completely understand and can sympathize with. I think where we came to with, in our conversations with them, were, "Let's go on a sidewalk of the other location and see where, what ideas you all have to mitigate the impact to new residents with this new proposed solution," and we were never able to get there. So if there was another location that had less impact, MEA was very open to looking at that option, but we could not, we could not find that, and we did not have one suggested to us. So for us, that's been the frustrating point to get to after not just six months of community conversation, but we've been talking to the community about this project for years, is we really want to work constructively to reduce the impact, to make this as low impact as possible with the least impact to our members, and we're having a hard time having that conversation and getting to a solution on that. So for me, that's what I think, based on comments that we've received, will be the frustration that we were not able to find another location for the substation.
But in all fairness, we have a, we have a substation there now.
Correct.
And it's operating. And you've made considerable strides in adapting, using new technology, using newer equipment, reducing your footprint to solve your problem. And with that in mind, what about, what about negative comments from the community with what is proposed on site? Anything addressing that, the concerns that are before us now, other than, of course, what you just said, putting it elsewhere to begin with?
Those were the primary, through the Chair, those were the primary concerns. When we talked to the residents at our in-person meetings, when we went to the Community Councils, it was all about moving it. And so I'm sure that there are other elements that we will hear from the community. They have been very engaged and committed to talking about this, and so to that, I just really applaud them for being so engaged, well-educated, and committed to doing something. And, but those were the primary things that we heard. But again, I'm sure I will let them speak for themselves on other issues.
And thank you so much for being so candid. My reason for asking that question was, with the COVID, with the way that we're providing testimony, we don't know who's in the audience that might testify. We don't know who's in the queue that might testify, if anybody. And therefore, without knowing who might be or how the testimony might shape up here, I wanted to get that feedback from you beforehand. So thank you very much for being candid and responding. Thank you.
I'm going to turn next to Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Chair. I want, I have a response to earlier questions that came up. Mr. Strike asked about whether or not there was a requirement for the survivability of the landscaping. So it's sort of covered in two ways, one with this conditional use approval, the landscaping is required, but secondarily, I went to the code, and in Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, 07, 080, F3, BII, plant material replacement. In the event that existing plant materials die for any reason, the owner is responsible for replacement with other landscaping materials in accordance with the requirements of this section. So in Title 21, there's a plant material replacement requirement. Just wanted to sort of, I don't know about the South High School situation, but I was confident about what I said, and I wanted to have the citation to back that up. Early on, Commissioner Krishna asked about the lot coverage and the height, and I couldn't locate that on the spot, but I went back to the application, and there's quite a bit of text there, but the lot coverage of the site, those are the structures and the concrete pad, is 6% lot coverage, and the requirement is not to exceed 30%, but it's a 6% lot coverage. And then the height of utility substations, the maximum height allowed is 70 feet. After that, they have to apply for a conditional use permit for the height of the towers, but 70 feet is the maximum height allowed by right, and these towers are 50.5 feet. Thank you.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes, thank you. I have a question for the petitioner. Not that I want to go in details too far, but on the fence, the 12-foot fence at the perimeter of the site, is that a solid, like a sound-type fence? Or, it's really hard to tell from the packet whether those are open slats, or is that a solid fence? What can you tell us about that? The reason why I'm asking, I guess, is just the ability to dampen the sound. I've been involved with some sound barrier designs along roadways, you know, Tudor Road and places like that. I know how, Northern Lights is a good example, nearby, but there's, a 12-foot-high solid fence can be very effective at dampening sounds. I'm trying to see what kind of fence you have in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Chair, Commissioner Looney, through the Chair. So the fence is solid, it is 12 feet in height, it has interlocking pickets, and because we wanted it to, instead of doing like some sort of metal fence, we want it to fit into the character of the neighborhood. So it is wood, it is like trex-like, and a natural color to blend in, and the interlocking pickets are meant to help dampen the sound, and it is a trex-like material. And we did have to get an Urban Design Commission design variant on that fence that was approved last year as well. It is not in place of landscaping, it is in addition to landscaping to help screen as well as provide security fencing because electrical substations are electrically charged and no public members need to go in there.
Thank you.
All right. See no other questions in the queue. I'm gonna, oh, Commissioner Strike, you just got in under the wire.
Sorry about that. Under the current code, can MEA utilize this property and place, for example, a 70-foot cell phone tower on this lot, or for that matter, a 90-foot tower? What restrictions might there be?
The question is whether or not something not shown in the packet could be included after the fact.
Yes.
I believe the conditional use is, well, that's a tough question.
The reason I'm asking, we've been talking about height, we've been talking about limitations, we've been talking about using new technology, keeping everything as small as footprint as possible, but MEA has their lines of service as well, or they may have other desires, and so the last thing I want to see happen here in this lot in this community is all of a sudden a request to come in to put a 90-foot cell phone tower in.
Through the Chair, I think I can answer this question. So what staff is saying is that the conditional use packet before you, once that's approved, MEA cannot, the conditions for the electrical substation use in the Tugat U River R6 district, so any other uses and permits would need to start over. So if MEA decides to put a communications tower or cell tower in the future, that would have to go through a permitting process, and that would negate the conditional use for this electrical substation. There are no plans for that. I appreciate the question. After the conditional use decision is made, and for example, it's approved with the conditions, those conditions have to be met, and then we have to get permits prior to construction, and those permits will look at whether or not the conditions were all met for this conditional use, including the previous entitlements that were granted, such as the replat that would help facilitate this conditional use, and then the fence-type variants. All of that is looked at prior to permit. So no other uses could be put on this property after the conditional use is reviewed and potentially approved.
And the reason I ask that question is that I did tour some utility substations in the Lower 48, and that's exactly what some of these utilities did. They actually placed cell phone comm towers on the top of some of their utility poles in substations, which A was kind of ingenious, which is a great idea in the remoteness, and they had all the access and security and so forth there. They were able to handle the interference aspect and so forth, but I thought it was a good use of the land and the planning and so forth. So what I didn't want to see happen is, okay, everyone's, if this were to go through, we've gone from 45 feet to 60 feet in height limitation or height program. I didn't want to all of a sudden see 60 become just like scope creep elsewhere, that all of a sudden now we've got a new aspect coming in, and now we're at 75, 80 feet for some apparatus. Thank you.
All right. Now I see no questions in the queue, and we can turn to public comment. Before we do, just to be courteous of the time of the people that are here in person, I just wanted to ask the individuals that are here in person, are you planning to stick around to the end of the hearing, no matter what? Okay, then I'm going to go to the phone first.
And just to clarify, I think we have some people who might have signed up for phone testimony. Is there a Karen Perry? Okay, I'll take you off the call list. Hi, is this Valerie Davies?
Yes, it is.
This is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for your public testimony on case 2020-0069. Before we get started... Before we get started, if you could mute whatever's in your background, just to cut down on the sounds coming in. Are you calling as a representative of a group or an individual?
An individual.
Okay, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. If you could state your full name for the record, you can begin.
Thank you. My name is Valerie Davies and I'm an adjacent property owner. I urge you to please vote no for this conditional use permit. MEA has been deceitful with the homeowners since the beginning. Our latest correspondence with the Birchwood Community Council, MEA stated they were lowering the smaller, making the footprint smaller, which I can see that they have attempted to do, yet they've purchased more property. I feel that once they get their hands on that property, it's, you know, you give them an inch, they take a foot. They're gonna keep wanting more and more and more. And eventually, my whole property is going to be surrounded by a substation with sixty-foot towers and lights on it. I feel like the substation can cause some health problems by living this close to it. I'm still worried about drainage and the eyesore that it presents to my property. Our property values, I project, are going to go down substantially with this expansion. And in an already trying market and times, I would really not like my property value to go down. I'm very concerned about that. Also, in listening to MEA's testimony and the impact that they say it would have to relocate it to the first property with the double white line, they said seventeen owners would be impacted, but that's a temporary impact. To change our existing poles for different poles to be able to have their feeder lines that would carry more electrical or whatever with it, it's a temporary impact. Whereas expanding the substation behind my home is a permanent impact. It will be there forever. And also, I still am a little bit confused as to why they cannot do underground lines. It's the twenty-first century. They're all the rave, from what I hear. Let's go with some underground lines. I believe that we get a special surcharge on our bill for underground lines. Let's utilize those funds. And that's all I have to say. Please vote no.
Thank you for your testimony. Can we hear from our next public testimony?
Remember, you must now dial.
Hi Brent, this is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for your public testimony on case twenty twenty dash zero zero six nine. Are you calling as an individual or a representative of a group?
An individual.
Okay, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. If you could state your name once again for the record, you can begin.
Okay, my name is Brent Davies. And my property is a hundred and sixty feet from their property line. And I will say that MEA has been very, very horrible in reaching out to me. I've reached out to Haley and to Julie multiple times. And I'll honestly say, I'm a little disappointed. As far as that's concerned, I do think that the location is better off in another location. It's not a permanent inconvenience, it's a temporary inconvenience. Also, does that current substation that we have now, does it have a ring bus? Because the new one looks like it has one, possibly two ring buses. Also, the height itself, I'm only allowed to build thirty-five feet up in the air. Why are they able to go up to sixty feet? Also, the engineering, have they looked at a gas insulated system to try to minimize the actual footprint of this? As far as that's concerned. They've talked about three feeder lines coming in, and then also a fourth one for the future. Is that actually something that's going to happen? The fourth one in the future? As far as that's concerned, I mean, where are we at and where are we going from here? The ring bus itself, does it need to be there? And that's the part that goes sixty feet in the air? Also, why are we being punished for the next thirty years to have to look at, listen to, and all of the above until this vegetation is actually up to par? You say it's going to be quieter, but according to my math, it's going up ten decibels. As far as the parcel that they bought out, that person they have reached out to in correspondence quite a bit, and they are the person that actually gives them the most feedback as far as the fence is concerned. The output of what the current substation produces now, and what does it go to? As far as that's concerned, on the, I think they're trying to make something that's bigger than what they need to. They're not trying to replace like-for-like. So the seventeen homeowners that are going to be inconvenienced because they gotta put up new poles, that's not nearly the inconvenience of having a building in your backyard, as far as that's concerned. Are you still with me?
And your time is up. I would like to thank you for your testimony.
Okay, thank you so much.
Have a good evening. Can we hear from the next member of the public?
The digit zero or one is not.
Hi, is this Ethan Perry?
Yes, it is.
This is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for your public testimony on case twenty twenty dash zero zero six nine. Are you calling as an individual or a representative of a group?
I'm calling as an individual.
Okay, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. If you could state your full name for the record, you can begin.
Okay, hi, my name is Ethan Perry. I grew up living adjacent to this devastation and I'm a trust beneficiary for that property. I oppose the CUP because to my knowledge, there has not been a truly robust quantitative impact comparison with alternative sites. Particularly, I do not believe that MEA has provided adequate justification for dismissing the alternative Upper Bowery site that is supported by the Birchwood Community Council. In a message dated eleven twelve twenty twenty, Julie SD states that there's a more significant member impact at the Upper Bowery site. To my knowledge, this claim is based wholly on a twenty fifteen relocation feasibility report that states that some ten to fifteen members would be affected by installation of new distribution feeders on the four principal residences that are impacted with the Upper Bowery Lane site. Beneath the surface, this appears to be an overly simplified reason to pursue MEA's preferred site. In my job as a civil engineer, I often perform a review environmental impacts analysis for projects requiring federal permits. For these analyses, we don't look at only the extent or gross number of affected properties. We must also consider both the severity and duration of said impacts. The twenty fifteen feasibility report does not seem to discuss these factors. For MEA's current proposed project, there are seven properties surrounding the site that are directly affected. For this option, there will be major and decades-long visual impacts from fifty-foot towers placed on ten feet of new fill and sound level sometimes twice as loud as the existing site, which both serve to greatly degrade quality of life and harm property values. For many residents, their homes represent their greatest financial assets. And so this impact, in addition to the direct degradation effects to overall quality of life, is a very significant and effectively permanent impact for current residents and the proposed mitigation measures do not adequately address these problems. So for MEA's CUP request, there is a major long-term impact to seven properties. For the Upper Bowery Route option to the alternative site, several of the seventeen impacted properties are currently just vacant lots. Another half of the impacted properties are just properties located across the street from the right-of-way and not directly affected. This leaves about five or so residences, roughly, that are currently occupied and would have work occurring on their land. The impacts of these would be limited to only a moderate inconvenience for a single summer during construction, plus the long-term impact to the additional overhead line. But since there's already a pre-existing overhead line and according to the report, no additional right-of-way increase is required, the long-term impact is minor to negligible for these properties. For the alternative site itself, the natural topography and distance buffer combined with the existing highway noise would greatly reduce any impacts to the four residents in the area to minor or more likely negligible effect. It is naturally well-hidden from residents and well-situated to even house the larger design that MEA had originally proposed for Steffi's location. You could fit it in there just fine. An impacts analysis conducted by a neutral third party might very well find that when weighted properly for impacts of their and duration, the Steffi site has an overall much greater impact to residents than the other site in Upper Bowery Route. And therefore, the CUP should not be issued until a serious and impartial comparison is completed. As a final note, existing conditions at the Steffi site must be set prior to MEA jumping the gun on clear cutting the area several years ago. They should not receive any credit for that work they have done prior to gaining CUP approval. Thank you for your time.
Perfectly timed comment. Thank you for your testimony. Can we hear from our next member of the public?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Strike, go ahead.
Is the, is he still on the line?
I'm here.
Yes, two quick questions here. Is the, currently, there's obviously a substation in this area now and you're adjacent to the property. Do you have an issue with the current substation as it currently is being performed?
As it was currently prior to all the clear cutting, no, it wasn't so bad.
Okay. And have you reviewed the redesign and understand the footprint that the redesign takes up on this? Or do you have any comments regarding the redesign that is now being proposed this evening? And not referring to the proposal that came out in June, that the new design?
So, yeah, so the redesign is a significant improvement over the original June design. However, those fifty-foot towers, which I believe will be placed on ten feet of new fill, that's significantly higher than the current existing site. And then the sound increase from forty-three decibels, I believe I said, for the current configuration, up to fifty-three decibels. Well, that maybe doesn't sound like much, but that actually represents a noise level twice as loud as the current configuration. And so both of those are pretty major impacts, in my opinion.
But you understand they did create additional buffer between, and by purchasing this other lot and expanding that buffer distance as part of the mitigation?
I do understand that's mitigation to one side, but there is properties that surround this site on all sides, not just the one edge. In addition to that, you know, the trees that they propose, those aren't going to be fully sized for twenty or thirty years. Well, in twenty or thirty years, most of the residents of these properties, a lot of them are older. They're going to be long gone. And so to them, that's essentially a permanent visual impact and a permanent auditory impact.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we hear from our next member of the public?
Yes, it is.
This is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for your public testimony on case twenty twenty dash zero zero six nine. Are you calling as an individual or a representative of a group?
I'm an individual.
Okay, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. If you could state your full name for the record, you can begin.
Okay, my name is Steve Wisdorf, and I'm part of the family that owns the property directly to the north, adjacent to the lot. I just wanted to bring a couple little points. Julie mentioned that, you know, we chose to purchase the property next to an existing substation. Well, the family that's owned this has owned it since before the original substation was installed over fifty years ago, and there was no notification at that time of even that substation, let alone some of the other things that have gone on since then. One point that was brought up is property values, and, you know, we definitely agree our property values are going to go down and, you know, who's going to make up that loss? That's one question I had. So in my original thoughts here, the, I mean, the original expansion and upgrade was scope and size to meet the needs of the community for now and the future. And then the surrounding neighbors made it clear that they were opposed to this expansion, let alone the size and nature. You know, MEA did propose a downsized version, but by their own admission, that it would not meet the original needs. Since they are aware that this downsized would not meet the requirements, it just doesn't make sense to put it there. They can get the full-size substation they want at the alternate location that we've discussed at the Upper Bowery. And we've brought this up, I've been to both community council meetings and onsite with them, and at both those times, or all three of those times, I've also mentioned buried lines, which have never come up in any of these studies or in any of the proposals. We worked in good faith in trying to find alternate solutions, and the one up on the Bowery is the ultimate solution. They talk about impacting all these other people, and like I say, the studies did not take in burying the lines. They do show two parallel white lines, and that's because they say they need two sets of lines to meet the requirements for four feeders. But if they use existing right-of-way and bury the lines, they can put it all within the existing right-of-way. And that would be less impact, and within two years, the visual impacts would be much, would hardly be any visual impacts within two years. It would all be going, you know, going back and everything else underground. And they would also probably get rid of the existing overhead line, actually giving an improvement to the neighbors along the way. And I am an electrical contractor, so I did confirm that they can bury all that in that existing right-of-way. There's plenty of space to do that. One other point I'd like to bring up, they talk about the footprint of only being six percent. According to the codes, they only have to count the footprint of the concrete. So if you had your whole house sitting on four concrete pillars, one foot square, your house would have a four-foot impact on the land, even though it could be thousands of square feet. So just be aware, it's not the structure size, it's the actual part touching the ground.
Thank you for your testimony. Your time is up.
All right, thank you.
Have a good evening. Can we hear from our next member in the public?
That concludes telephonic testimony, unless you'd like me to retry the ones that went to voicemail.
Could you try that? Um, could you try that?
Your call cannot be con-
No ma'am, the number we have for him does not work. Sure. Yes, we did try that twice.
Hello?
Hi, is this Laura Suarez?
Yes, this is. I'm so glad you called us back.
Yeah, this is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for your testimony on case 2020-0096. Are you calling as an individual or representative?
As an individual.
Okay, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. If you could please state your full name for the record, you can begin.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Laura Suarez, and we Park Substation neighbors are not persuaded by MEA's architectural renderings picturing lush buffer tree planting and unrealistic growth. My dad is a forestry major who worked in the field, and we've discussed the inadequacies of their buffer. Their art makes us question if they are completely naive regarding tree health and growth, or we wonder, are they depending on the residents and the commissioners being unknowing? The strict Title 21 wording demanding that utilities in residential areas shall be constructed in a way that blends in with the natural surroundings does not ease up with the relieving words, quote, "someday," unquote. Because healthy trees narrow at their tops, even twenty-five to thirty-feet-tall trees would not hide the fifty-point-five-foot-tall structure with towers reaching far up behind. That would take half a century or more of even the best of tree growth, and residents who have chosen to build and live here now at a mere small substation because of the wooded aesthetics would be long dead. For a tree to grow as MEA artwork pictures would take being rooted in nutrient-rich soil, MEA's deep-hauled-in pad of lifeless pure gravel is devoid of all nutrition. Their planned spreading of a mere four inches of topsoil is not even deep enough to satisfy professional lawn specialists who advocate eight inches as best to simply grow grass. Tree root systems obviously need to anchor and feed much deeper. For trees to grow up of a cultured Christmas tree-like densefulness as in their pictures would require regular, careful pruning, and their nutrient-starved planting of any trees that even survive would grow up very slowly and very scraggly thin. Commissioners should ask MEA, would you take out a bond or insurance policy guaranteeing for the life of the substation, prompt size for size replacement of dying and dead trees? The only way MEA could have been able to truly hide this substation was lost when they prematurely cut the mature forest to the property line. And with that in mind, the alternative Upper Bowery site we suggested is dense forest afforded in total hiding, and that neighborhood would not be aesthetically affected in the least. Properties along that route would be temporarily affected by the installation if there's any truly, any homeowners of all. Are they just seventeen properties, or is it truly seventeen homeowners? Along with power lines, but the proposed Park Substation location for a project of this magnitude, even though it's been scaled down, a project of this magnitude with these high towers would devastate property and homeowner's values indefinitely. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Um, could individuals who are testifying in person, can someone please approach the podium? community council or another organization, please let me know. Yes, you can. You do need to turn the mic on before you begin.
Hi, my name is Karen Perry. I feel MEA is trying to do an end run around the Birchwood residence, and indeed around this board. First of all, they could not force and cram an industrial-sized substation into this small R6 neighborhood, so they circumvent by pretending to reduce the footprint. But as per their own design plans that they have admitted in our council meetings, this is only phase one. The quote-unquote "smaller" design is still three times larger than the current substation and would move closer to the homes already there. Not only that, MEA also purchased not one, but two residential lots to use for non-residential purposes, which violates CER 201040 code, despite what MEA has claimed on page fourteen, section C and E read, quote, "conserve residential lands for housing by limiting conversion of the residential base to non-residential uses," unquote. It also directs to, quote, "preserve and protect the scale, character, and unique appeal of existing residential neighborhoods," unquote, which is why we bought our properties out there. Therefore, criteria one, two, and five are not met. On top of all that, they are asking the board to look past and in fact reward their bad behavior when in 2014 they developed the first purchased property with no CUP in place, leaving a ten-foot fill and other items that are still on the property. There has been no remedy for those actions. We simply cannot allow MEA to circumvent the rules that everyone else is expected to follow. MEA is even trying to change the history of the site. They claim they brought power to a completely undeveloped area, but as someone else testified, the lots around the station already had houses with electricity. This is not the case of them building a station and people moving in next to them. It is them expanding and moving their station closer to us by making it three times larger and moving the footprint. MEA, please stop the pretense that there are no other feasible location options. This is simply not true. What MEA is unwilling to admit, this is the elephant in the room, that they took the risk and improperly developed these lots with no CUP in place. That is the real reason they keep doubling down on this location. Property number one listed on MEA's feasibility study, oh, I bumped, much more feasible option, despite their deliberate misrepresentations of its impacts, and others have spoke to this issue. MEA claims ongoing communication with the community residents since October 2014, or fourteen, but we haven't heard a word from them since October. Thank you.
I have one follow-up question. You mentioned a few times in your comments that the new substation is going to be three times the size of the other one. Um, I will ask the petitioner and staff this question as well, but I was wondering how you got that three times amount. According to our staff packet, the original proposal that they had was six times larger than the current substation that's in place, and that the new proposal is seventy percent smaller than the substation that they proposed. And if my math is correct, which it very much could not be correct, that means it's one-point-eight times larger than the current substation in place.
I am not a math professional, and I've got that number from a friend of mine that did the math. So I'm not sure, but yes, it is still bigger. And I thought I saw on the packet where it said something about six-hundred-and-thirty-three percent. I mean, we didn't get this big giant packet that's out there until tonight. And so I have to say, I don't think the Muni website is really the easiest to get through and find things, and...
I would agree with you there. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Can the next member who wishes to testify come up? And you'll need to turn on your mic to begin. When it turns red and stays red, that's how you'll know it's on. It's currently not red.
I'm almost standing in my hearing.
Then we're on equal footing, because we have trouble with audio.
If someone has questions for him, somebody might need to help with his hearing. Okay, you're on.
Okay, my name is Rod Perry. Um, in June, commissioners admonished MEA to work with the neighbors. After lengthy wait, MEA contacted not all, but only my wife, asking to talk with just us. Instead, I organized a sizable group meeting on the park site. I brought in neighbors, our Muni assembly reps, and an MEA contingent. MEA did nothing other than agreeing on meeting time. A pattern began of MEA almost never contacting the rest of the neighbors, but only me. Dealing with the pandemic, family and home, at seventy-eight years old, I did what I could, but it was not my duty to shoulder communication burdens commissioners had lined MEA out to do. MEA expressed happiness about, quote, "restarting talks with us." Before those assembled, I corrected MEA, clarifying that you can't very well restart something that you had, that had never been started. MEA had never before acknowledged more than one property was impacted when six, um, others were truly, uh, impacted bordering the site. Opposing priorities and arguments had not changed. Um, theirs, um, first was to protect the millions they had unpermitted already sunk into the site, and that heavily biased everything, um, from there on. Second, build a large complex, starting small, if that's what it takes to gain a foothold, eventually providing power and functions far beyond Park's traditional coverage. If rural residential lifestyle values spelled out in Title 21 stand in the way, depend on them being waved aside. Our priorities: protect our rural residential values that drew us to build and live there. Protect them not only for us, Park's neighbors, but for all of Birchwood, that has wide stake in precedent this settle, uh, this settlement will make of how strongly Title 21 is regarded in the future, and whether it carries influence. We put forth two options. Number one, stick to what MEA promised when they first canvassed the neighborhood, claiming they only wanted to upgrade and modernize the old site. The site already handles twice the power the area uses. Just replace like-for-like, stay strictly on the old grandfathered-end footprint. Second offering was a resolution backed 21 to 3, um, in a vote of Birchwood Community Council to shift building location to a site MEA had already surveyed as an alternate. Um, heavily wooded, five acres, hidden hundreds of feet from the nearest house, on land beside the Glen Highway roar, worthless for everything else. It's not in the middle of a rural residential area, but out on the very edge, a few paces from the Glen Highway. MEA could build as large a facility as they desired there, and every Title 21 nuance would be honored. Of course, that would not protect, uh, Park's investment in the long-held game plan, um, that, um, they stretched questionable points, trying to discredit the resolution.
Sorry, um, I have to interrupt you. Your time is up.
Okay.
I would like to thank you for your testimony. I don't see any questions in the queue.
May I question the chair? Our son has had-
Can you speak into the mic?
Sorry. Our son Gabriel Perry, um, I think that you tried to call, has had trouble with his phone. Uh, he's got crucial testimony. I wonder if MEA and, um, the, the commission would be so good as to allow me to read his testimony, which I have here?
I will allow it. Yes, go for it.
All right. I'll just say, my name is Gabriel Perry. Title 21 has, um, um, one dominant, or several dominant themes. One is preservation enhancement of community character and lifestyles, and protection of those physical and aesthetic characteristics and values residents hold necessary and dear. So much is spelled out shielding rural residential neighborhoods from commerce and industry. We find in the codes the same spirit of protection from power substations, destructive effects to residential property values and aesthetics. And I'll just, uh, quote this, and not trying to school anybody, but AMC Table 2110-4, Table of Allowed Uses, uh, 2105040J3B, Utility Substations Use Specific Standards, reads, "The facility shall be designed and constructed to ensure visual and aesthetic compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood." The shall was intended to make the rest of the sentence non-negotiable. If enforced at Justin Parks, as written, it demands that if MEA cannot make their new substation blend in look-wise and feel-wise with the wooded, peaceful look and feel of the surrounding natural setting, they just flat can't build it. Therefore, criteria number three, um, has not been met. Um, can anyone realistically imagine that fifty- or sixty-foot lighted towers, massive steel pillars and beams, large humming transformers, maze of wires, huge insulators, and steel control buildings can blend with visual, um, and aesthetic compatibility into our natural woodland setting? Logically, the only possible way to live up to the shall demand of a use-specific standard is to totally hide the substation with fairly mature forest. A planted foreground of short trees will leave it looming so far above, it will be about the same as if that attempt at buffering were not there. The fence, too, is visually and aesthetically incompatible with the natural woodland, uh, and woodland homes. I'll mention in passing that the alternative Upper Bowery site would be hidden totally by dense woodland and not violate this Title 21 compatibility demand.
Thank you for providing his testimony.
Thank you very much.
Can we hear from the next member of the public?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Go ahead. As a property owner-
If you could start by stating your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm Dan Jizwinski, and I'm a property owner with a shared property line and a house less than a hundred feet from the MEA Park Substation expansion project. I request the disapproval of a conditional use permit, case 2020-069. Although MEA's current application is a reduction, it is still does not align with the Chugiak Eagle River's comprehensive plan. It's still too large a station. It is still several times bigger than the existing station, and it still does not fit the unique appeal of the existing residential neighborhood. It is noisier and much closer to the rest, to the residents. Decibels are measured somewhat like earthquakes. Each increase is a multiplier. A three-decibel change yields a hundred percent increase in sound energy and just over a twenty-three increase in loud, uh, loudness. Although their sound estimate meets the letter of the law for all locations, it should still be judged for its impact on this location. MEA started this project by ignoring the rules and started construction without permits or community input. Now, after their conditional permit has been denied several times, they have continued to misrepresent and embellish this site and unilaterally discredit a viable alternative to capitalize on the cost of the construction that they had already performed. We had a meeting in July, and they said they would get back with us in ten days, and they never did get back with us. I mean, I've waited and waited, and, uh, MEA has never gotten back to me like promised. And all I came to the conclusion was that MEA did not want to hear my concerns or ideas for this station, so we decided to help for a resolution to move it somewhere else. MEA stated that the pass would only affect one adjacent lot. Clearly, this is untrue. There are five lots permanently affected, three of them with houses. The alternate-site property doesn't have any house less than four hundred feet away, and it would be buffered by natural topography and mature forest. MEA is completely misleading in their statement that seventeen people would be affected in the routing of the feeder lines from the property one. They neglect to mention it would only be temporary, and that several of the properties across the road or have no houses on them. They neglect to mention that the easements are already in use, and for the most part- They neglect to mention that the easements are already in use and, for the most part, already clear-cut. I gave a picture earlier. Could you bring that up? Is there any way to put that on top of the screen? Okay. MEA purchase of multiple residential lots solely for non-residential purpose is also against the spirit and intention of Chugiak's Eagle River's Comprehensive Plan. Conserve residential lands for housing by limiting conversion-
Sorry, I'm going to have to interrupt you. Your time is up.
That was my last statement. I was trying to quick get it in because I got-
It's always a fine line. Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Can we hear from the last individual? Please state your name for the record, and then you can begin.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Matt Cookshank. I am the acting Chair of Birchwood Community Council, and I am speaking on behalf of Birchwood Community Council. So, good evening, Commissioners. Birchwood Community Council opposes this conditional use permit. Although MEA has reduced the size of the proposed site, MEA has made it clear from Questions and Answers that the substation does have plans for future expansion at later dates, and there are no restrictions on this conditional use permit for further expansion. Birchwood Community Council, on October 14, 2020, Membership Meeting overwhelmingly supported a resolution requesting MEA to pursue construction of their expanded substation at their alternative location located at Upper Bowery. Justin Park Substation is situated in the middle of a CER-6 low-density residential district. The CER-6 district is designed to encourage low-density residential development with gross densities up to one dwelling unit per acre while, at the same time, protecting and enhancing those physical environmental features which add to the desirability of rural residential living. With a maximum lot coverage of 30% and no industrial uses allowed, it is very clear the intent to protect and enhance those physical and environmental features which add to the desirability of the rural residential living. If there were no potential alternative sites available, this situation may warrant a different response. There is also a question of why additional conditional use permit was not filed for the tower-high voltage transmission poles that would accompany the proposed site standing over 60 feet tall. And I would add right there, as I do know that there was a reduction in 10 feet as the lightning rods were removed from the previous poles right there, but I do have a question if that is a code requirement and that was required at a later date, would that be able to warrant a conditional use permit? Or would, since the, it's not, the substation would already be in place, it would be a difficult thing to go through that process again. Although it may not be relevant to this conditional use permit, neighbors brought up a very interesting point regarding overall impact of comparable substation sites, and I heard this point reiterated over and over. MEA listed how many neighbors would be potentially affected with the alternative feeder line routes, but never broke down in terms of long-term impact of alternative locations, i.e. the neighbor in convenience with the buried underground line versus the neighbor with the 60-foot pole in his backyard. It is very clear by overwhelming support for the resolution supported by Birchwood Community Council that the council does not support this conditional use permit allowing expansion of the Park Substation. And I'd just add to this, you know, I see that there's really two different routes that could be going here. Obviously, I don't think there's much trust with the neighbors that this is the only site that's going to go there. There's big plans for all these trees, but will the trees ever see, what's the word, fruition or whatever, will they ever be that actual big before the time that an additional conditional use permit is filed for an additional transformer right there? So I think the neighbors, and rightfully so, are quite concerned that there is going to be expansion of this site, and so when they look at this site, it's hard just to look at it as a single transformer. In their minds, they see this as a foot in the door, and there will be future expansion. There is no restrictions on this conditional use permit. So how can they view this? And in question, MEA has acknowledged that there is plans for future expansion of this site, so I mean, that's kind of irrevocable. As far as, I know I've already said it, but I'll say it again right there, is there impact to neighbors with the alternative site? Most definitely. And are there quantities that are higher than the people surrounding? Yes. But the level of impact is, you can't compare a one-on-one basis of the level of impact because, I mean, ultimately, in my opinion, we care about long-term impact to neighbors. That's what's meaningful, and that's what counts in the long run, and that's what we look at. So I urge the Commissioners to place restrictions or vote no on this conditional use permit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Before you go, I may have a follow-up question for you, but I wanted to ask a question of staff. I am blanking on your name, sir.
Matt Cookshank.
Matt. Matt Cookshank mentioned that this could be a foot in the door. However, I'm looking at Department of Recommendation Number Two, that all construction shall substantially conform to the application narrative and plans on file with the Planning Department. To me, my reading of Number Two is that that wouldn't allow future building or building that exceeds what's currently in our packet to take place. Am I interpreting that wrong, or?
No, you have that correct, Madam Chair.
Can you repeat that? Explain what you're saying?
So currently, as it's read, the motion has been presented, and the department recommended approval, but they recommended approval subject to six conditions. One is that a notice of the zoning action, including a copy of their approved resolution, shall be filed with the District Recorders Office, and proof of such shall be submitted to the Planning Department. The second one is that all construction shall substantially conform to the application, which is what's presented to us, the narrative and plans on file with the Planning Department. That means it has to conform with those pictures. It has to conform with those sizing requirements. Another condition is that they had to resolve with the Traffic Engineering Department the length of paving needed for the driveway. Four was that they had to monitor and mitigate noise to comply with AMC 15.7. That's the noise section of our charter. And then, five is that they have to monitor and mitigate vibrations to ensure that they don't exceed .03, is that meters per second squared? I'm not sure. Within or beyond 94 feet of the transformer. And six is that they have to monitor and mitigate lighting at the property lines to ensure that they don't exceed .3-foot candles. So there are conditions that the staff has recommended, subject to approval. And so I guess my follow-up question to you is knowing that if we approve this tonight, it had to conform to this application and narrative and what was shown tonight, would that ease some of your concerns with knowing that it's not just going to be a foot in the door?
Through the Chair. So to my understanding, with this packet that's being filed, that they do have to follow the construction guidelines that have been, but if an additional conditional use permit was filed, wouldn't that be a different scenario? Wouldn't they not necessarily be held to the same construction standards?
I'm going to turn that one to staff.
A future application can be submitted.
Yes, exactly.
I understand your concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, we also have a question from Commissioner Anderson.
Yeah, just curious, as the representative for the Community Council, if you've had direct contact with property owners along some of the alternate routes, and if you could speak for them, saying that they don't feel like it would be a big impact to add additional wires along those routes, or if that's kind of a general statement, if you could comment on that?
No, I have not heard specifically from the neighbors on that route.
Thank you. And before we turn back to, I guess, yeah, we'll turn back to our petitioner. I guess one thing I'm just going to point out there that maybe the petitioner will address is that they may want to clarify that, I believe, the people on that alternative route weren't included in the notice area, so we would not have their testimony. All right, I believe the petitioner has four minutes and four seconds remaining for rebuttal.
Thank you, through the Chair. This is Juan with R&amp;M Consultants again. I appreciate all the public testimony, and I just want to provide a little summary of some questions that were posed and maybe not cleared, were not entirely clear to the public. For example, the existing substation, as it is today, is 7,800 square feet. The proposed substation, the redesigned replacement that is in the packet for tonight's review is twice as big at 16,450 square feet, and that's the area inside of the fence, that's the entire area. I also want to reiterate that it is a replacement project and not an expansion, and also that the feeder lines, we talked about earlier, I want to clarify that those lines can be underground, but the transmission lines are overhead. Bearing the line still requires clearing and easement, as well as there would be impacts to those, excuse me, additional properties. We are not adding the 10-foot of fill. There was a comment earlier from Ethan Perry, and I just want to clarify that. The replacement is required because the substation isn't going to meet electrical safety code, and so that's a huge reason why this substation is undergoing this process. As far as the conditional use is concerned, any changes to the packet that is before you tonight will have to go through another process exactly like this one. The conditional use is only for what's proposed. It is not, there is no phase two, that was asked about earlier. This is, the conditional uses don't work that way. What's before you is what we're showing you is what can be built if it was permitted. There's additional permitting that's required after this conditional use. The conditional use is a land use permit. The additional permits for construction, zoning review, electrical equipment, that, those are another array of permitting that happens after this. I also want to clarify for some of the residents that talked about the ring bus. There is no ring bus with this redesign. The previous project that we submitted in June did have a ring bus, but this one does not. We feel like that most of the concerns that were addressed, including the size, the noise, the buffering, the additional landscaping, the size with the redesign is what's before you. What we can't help is whether or not people want to live next to the substation, or, and we did tell the relocation analysis as to why this is the least impactful site because it is an existing site. Thank you.
Thank you for your response. Are there any questions in the queue for the petitioner? Commissioner Strike.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the follow-up responses to some of the outstanding questions that have been posed by the testimony. In regards to the conversation that spoke to phase, it was specifically noted in one of the testimonies that even in your notes that you identified this as phase one. Can you speak to that, as well as what is the long-term plan for MEA, its 10-, 15-, 20-year plan on this site? Do they envision ultimately having to grow this site to what was originally planned? As they said, they're barely meeting the requirements now. So trying to zero back in onto that scope creep that might be generated, albeit it has to be brought forth in a new conditional use, but I want to hear from the petitioner. Thank you.
Thank you, through the Chair. I'm going to have John Sinclair with MEA respond to the question.
Yeah, thanks, Juan. So our load growth projections indicate that what we have before you is what is going to be there for the long term. We have, it is a replacing kind, except for the transformer. The transformer is doubling in capacity, which means that we will have double the capacity at that site to handle load for the foreseeable future. Foreseeable future, given the current load projections, is 30-plus years out. So it is, now, of course, that can change. You can get 15 years on the low end and higher on the high end, but this is a long-term solution for MEA in this area.
Okay, thank you.
I believe Commissioner Gardner is next in the queue.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions, and I'll try to move through them quickly. The first is a follow-up to Commissioner Strike's question, and thinking of long-term plans, recognizing that you anticipate this, I think I heard you just say last or be adequate for the community's needs for 30 years. If it falls on the shorter end of that, and you need to find kind of something new or upgrade or do something to address that, have you looked at any other sites, or what are you thinking might take place then? Would it require upgrading this? Or are there alternate locations that you kind of have considered in the back burner in some fashion?
So we do have, it depends on where the load growth is. So I want to, you know, be a technical review to see where that growth occurs. Most of this area is already developed, so it would be unusual to see that large of a load growth in the area, but if it does occur right near this substation, then yes, we probably would look at doing some modifications to this substation, but that would have to be very significant load growth. We have other substations in, like Powder Reserve for load that is further out from this location, and we also have additional substations in Eagle River, and then possibly new locations depending on where the load is. So it's really a question of where that load growth would occur. But again, that would be significant load growth in an already well-developed area, which is unlikely. I never want to say never, but typically that does not occur. Fairly confident this would be around for a very long time, but again, I never want to say never.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. My second question, and I'm not sure who the appropriate person to answer it would be, relates to the height, again, of the transmission getaways, and there was a comment provided just now and also in the packet in the application materials that mentions that this is kind of a critical needs replacement project at this point, in part to comply with current kind of standards. And I guess my specific question is, what is the nature of those standards that leads to the higher transmission getaways under these current plans compared with what's existing in place at the moment?
This is John Sinclair again. So the height clearance, there are code requirements for specific clearances. In addition to that, there is also, over the substation, lightning protection, which is new. Lightning protection did not exist. We just are seeing more lightning. So that does add height over the substation itself. The getaways do have specific clearance requirements to meet that, and it depends on the configuration of those getaways that really dictates, so depending, the current one out there is called an H-frame, and it's just the configuration itself and how we get into and out of the substation that really, and the electrical clearance requirements. So it's a code requirement, depending on how we set it up, and this is going in at a slightly different angle than the existing, which alters those heights, but it's fairly close, and Haley can probably give you the exact number, but it's fairly close to the existing. It is a little bit taller, though, because of the geometry.
Thank you. And then my final question relates to, again, the alternate-site consideration, and I want to make sure I understand, I asked some questions earlier, and we looked at the maps that were included where it shows the white strips that would represent some clearing in the right-of-way that need to be done. But I'm hoping you can explain in a little more detail what the actual kind of visual changes would look like. I understand that one of these would require building a new distribution line on one side of Upper Bowery Lane, but is there currently, I gather, an existing line, a single-circuit distribution line? And what would some of the alternate lines that would need to be, or a single-phase distribution line, excuse me, what would some of the upgraded lines, how would they look differently from what currently exists on Bowery?
Yeah, great question.
If that alternate, yeah.
So, great question. The, there would actually physically, when you go from a single-phase to a three-phase, there's more wires. It goes from two to four. So there's physically more infrastructure out there, which requires a larger right-of-way, and even if you put it underground, it still just requires more physical separation. And underground also requires clearing on a regular basis because people say, well, it's underground. There's actually quite a bit of infrastructure that's above ground. We have pool pads, we have switch cabinets, J-box, pads. All of that has to be cleared around, so not only do you have the initial clearing for underground, you maintain that clearing basically indefinitely. So it is going to be a permanent impact for this infrastructure to go in, and depending on the facilities, you're looking at 15 to 30 feet of clearing, depending on how many circuits we put there, and what the configuration needs to be for that specific road and elevation. So there's a lot that goes into it, but you're looking at 15 to- So there's a lot that goes into it, but you're looking at 15 to 30 feet, depending on the location and where we go, that has to be initially cleared, and then additional clearing on a regular basis for any facilities that are above ground, and that's quite a wide range of clearing. So it is going to wind up being a permanent impact to those homeowners.
And thank you for that, just a quick follow-up. Did you say what, I heard 15 to 30 feet initial clearance, and then the continuing clearance? Do you have a sense of what that would measure?
Yeah, I'd have to look at the specifics of that design. So you have those little green boxes you see everywhere, those get cleared around, and typically we need 10 feet plus all the way around those, and those are usually, you know, every two or three houses, because that's the power that goes to the house. You also have, you have other facilities there that get cleared. So even after the initial clearing, you've got to realize that there'll be additional clearing done to maintain those facilities. So it really does wind up impacting people a lot more, even if you go underground, just because of the above-grade facilities that we have to maintain.
All right. I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, this is a question for staff, and maybe just a technicality, but I was looking at Chapter 15 about the noise, noise requirements of property lines, and the text in that chapter references emitting property, hold on a sec. The emitting properties land category and the receiving properties land category. And I think in, in the packet, they're calling the emitting properties land category as industrial, when the actual land category is Chiaque Eagle River R6, which is residential. So just a question on if it's the appropriate decibel limitation that we're trying to meet.
Through the chair, the Health Department, Janine Nessheim, there is a, their code covers situations residential, butting utility substations, so what shall be the maximum allowed noise at the property line? And under what hours can it be which decibels? But the conditions of approval reference that section of code, but, you know, I can't, I can't go beyond that, what would be applicable.
Commissioner Anderson, did you have a follow-up question, or?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Krishna.
Thank you. I have two questions. One is, just to clarify that I'm reading the replacement study correctly. To clarify, this is not comprehensive of all potential replacement sites. Could you speak to what radius replacement site would need to be in, and whether, you know, more than the two sites that were evaluated, there would be other options as well? Is that correct?
Did we lose the petitioner on that one? I believe Commissioner Krishna's question was directed to the petitioner. Did the petitioner just log back on?
Yes, through the, through the chair. I'm sorry, I got dropped.
Commissioner Krishna, can you repeat your question?
Sure. My first question is just about the relocation feasibility study, just to make sure I'm reading that correctly. That the alternative sites evaluated in that study are not comprehensive for all sites that may be available within the sort of radius that MEA would be looking at. Is that correct? There might be more sites that may be usable for that purpose?
Through the chair, yes. I'm going to have either Julie or Haley answer that question. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is Julie SD. What we did to start the feasibility is looking at the distance from the substation that we could maintain the proper level of voltage through the system, and that was deemed to be a 1.5-mile radius. And so we drew a concentric circle around the existing substation and identified at the time those open properties. I think there may have been three or something of those, of a properly-sized property in that circle. Of those, one was incredibly steep, like a sheer cliff, so that was not a usable property. The other was located over behind, across the highway, and that was one that's identified on the study. That was given a hard no to us from DOT, because they have existing easements on that property that they were unwilling to give. So at the time of the study, that Upper Bowery Lane was the only usable one. In subsequent discussions with the property, local adjacent property owners, in fact, I think it came up even during our June meeting, there was another place that was for sale that had an existing gas station, I think, on it. We investigated that, and the size of the property and the, the shape of the property would not allow us to put a substation on it. And there was also some pretty significant visual impact from some residences there, even though it was, you know, on the other side, it's bordered by some more commercial, big, large commercial properties. There was still some pretty significant residential impact there. But it was not, that was an unavailable law, just because the size and shape were not adequate for the electrical design that we needed. So there, there have not been as many properties as we had hoped as options when we, when we did the study. And again, that was 2015, and then we've been investigating other options as they've come open, but have not found anything adequate in, in those preliminary looks.
Okay, so I'm understanding correctly, the, a replacement site would need to be within 1.5 miles of the current site. Is that correct?
At the time of the study, that was the case. Haley or John, can you speak to whether that would be consistent today in 2021?
Yeah. So it is consistent, just due to the physics of, when you move a substation, you can move it quite a ways with transmission-level voltage, but distribution voltage, basically, you're, you can't go very far. That distribution circuit that you have on there, it just can't go very far. That's why we have to have substations located where we have them located. If you start removing a substation and try to feed it from an adjacent substation, you run into voltage issues, and you're light to them. So we can't start moving substations too far away without having those technical issues. So we are pretty isolated to a smaller area without pulling a transmission line to another location to keep that voltage up. And those are much larger structures with much larger impact to the members and residents in that area. So that's really one of the limiting factors. There is, you know, financial impact, too, the further away you pull it, but there is a technical aspect as well. And that's why that 1.5 miles is used.
All right, thank you. And I have just one other question, which is, if, you know, this conditional use was not approved, could you speak to whether the current site, the current facility would continue to operate on, on this site, and an additional replacement would be developed? Or could you speak to what the, the next, you know, decades might hold for the current facility, with this conditional use not to be approved? Thank you.
So this, this existing sub is quite old. The components in there, it's like a vehicle that's getting older and older. You have to repair it on a more regular basis. Things tend to fail more rapidly, and that's what we're facing with the existing infrastructure there. It doesn't meet current code requirements. It doesn't meet current environmental requirements, and it, the reliability continues to decrease. It's getting harder to get components for the existing substation. They don't make them anymore. So we really are at the end of its useful life. So a replacement is necessary to provide reliable power to that area, and we continue to work towards that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Strike?
Thank you. Two questions and comments. If an alternative site were to be utilized, would that eliminate this current site or augment? I think you may have answered that with the previous commissioner's comment, but I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, you're correct. The, the 1.5 miles approximately, it, we really do need a substation approximately within that area to maintain those voltages. You can, it is a technical issue to keep it within that area. You, we have other substations, but they're further away. If you pulled this one out and tried to feed from those adjacent subs, you'd wind up with that lower voltage. So you've got to keep it in this general area. Too far to the one to the south, and you run into voltage issues. Same thing if you pull it too far to the north, you wind up with voltage issues in this area, especially when we wind up doing maintenance and we have to move power from one sub to another while that substation is out. So it, it is a, a physical property of that voltage, just we want to make sure we're providing reliable power.
Understood, but an alternative site might also avail you of a larger substation as well, that could generate that additional voltage. Might it not?
No, so it could generate more power, but not voltage. We run our entire system in that area at 12.5 KV, that's our distribution voltage, so your voltage issue wouldn't go away. You could push more power, but not more voltage. Think of it as pressure in a pipe. It's a constant pressure, and your voltage can only go so far.
Thank you. I, thank you for the education. I needed that. Thank you. And one last question, and I posed this question in June, in the last go-around, and we talked about the viewable height of the structures or towers that would be on this site. And the suggestion was made about going subgrade or going down, and going down. And the concern was both cost, it was the drainage was an issue, et cetera. But I took specifically a trip here this past week to view the substation on O'Malley Road, which was used as an example back in June. And substantially greater than half that substation is below grade to the property to its immediate south and east. So they seem to have solved the drainage problem and the so forth. So I'm wondering why that might not be a solution here in order to alleviate the total, the total height concern. Might this, might we do an X and fill? Might we do a, a, in spot basis, a lowering of these towers by lowering the, by, by excavating, by going down in certain areas of this property? I think I saw in the report that, anyway, I posed that question back for a new response. Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I'm actually fairly familiar with the one on O'Malley. I, I worked on that one, and that was a cut into an existing hill. So we did cut into a hill and remove that hill, but we actually built up the pad itself so it was higher, and we had a dip or a moat, for lack of a better word, to allow that drainage on the backside, but we're actually higher on the front side. I said backside and front side. But basically, on the, on the north side, we were higher, and on the northeast, west side, I believe, we were, we were higher as well. And then on the backside, we did do quite a big excavation into that hill to make it as level as possible. You try to have a nice gradual slope on those substations for the drainage purpose. Here, we don't have that hill to X into. You'd just be going down for the most part, and we aren't planning to go into the hill. There is a hill on the other side of the existing substation, but we aren't planning to utilize that. So that, that was the difference there, is there was a large hill that we excavated out, and then brought up the actual substation itself to allow it to sit higher so it would drain well. We're, this one is currently positioned to drain well. If we started to dig down, you'd have to probably dig a moat out, which would actually disturb more of the vegetation, I would imagine. I'm not a drainage expert, but I've built a couple of subs, and that would be my guess, is you would have to actually remove some of the vegetation in order to get that moat, for lack of a better word, to drain.
Well, there's different styles of drains that could be used, but nevertheless, there is technology, and you're finding that here with the size, reduction of the footprint that you've done here now through this replacement versus the, to the redesign of this substation. But the height issue, which we'll continue to hear, we continue to hear issues that certain items can be addressed and can't, but the, I guess I'll push back. It doesn't sound like you've had the engineers look at this solution.
Well, and at O'Malley, the, the lines were actually overhead that went in, and they were a decent size for the transmission. They were underground for the distribution, and we plan to go underground here as well for the distribution to get out of the sub. It's going to be the height of those, the lightning protection inside the sub, and you do need to have that at a certain height to adequately shield the entire substation. So that, that height, even if you were to bury, you still have to protect that sub, and so there's physical properties. And excavating down, I've never done that at a substation. That's not standard utility practice to dig down, at least anywhere in Alaska. So I don't disagree, you know, someone could look at that. I've never seen a sub up here that's done that, and that's not the standard utility practice. And that's why I'm not familiar with digging down.
It may not, it may not be standard here in Alaska, but we're seeing it down Lower 48. I've taken the opportunity to tour some sites and address some of these type of concerns that I've, we've had here. And so there's technology that exists, and there's, that I don't think have been fully I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes, this is a question, probably more a comment, I guess, but the review in the packet on page 70 and 71 that addresses the same point that Commissioner Strike is discussing. But on page 70, it shows the plan view of the proposed pad, and it has that cut, which is like an AA kind of line right to the middle of it. Then on page 71, it shows on Section AA how the, I think the plan is to cut that hill, excavation area, they call it, kind of thing. So we're going to lower the south boundary a few feet, and for this pad, for the proposed substation. So I guess it's really just a point of, it's shown here that they do plan to cut the south boundary down to that level. That's all I had.
Any other questions for the petitioner or staff? Seeing no other questions in the queue, I just want to thank the petitioner, staff, and public for their testimony at this time. And petitioners, what is the will of the body?
I'll go ahead and get us started here. In matter of case number 2020-0069, this is the MEA Park Substation Revised Site Plan. I move to through, subject to the conditions of approval, located on page two of the staff packet.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner. Commissioner Anderson, is your motion, can I take that as a second? Move by Commissioner Gardner, second by Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Gardner, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I will. And I guess before I do that, I'll just make as a side note, I'll make some findings for the main motion, but we discussed, or I think Commissioner Strake at one point asked about a possible restriction on expanding to the neighboring property. And I'm hoping to hearing discussion on that at some point as well. But as for the main motion, I think I would plan to approve at the moment. I think it's a tough decision and I'll try and walk through some of my thoughts here as succinctly as I can. We evaluated this case in some detail in June and I know my thoughts at the time were that, and I supported postponing at that time, and the main limitation that I found with respect to the approval criteria related to the character of the surrounding area and that that proposal too significantly altered and affected the character of the area. Since then, the petitioner has done significant changes to the plan. It's much smaller. It's 70% smaller than the prior proposal and it currently stands, I think it's about twice of the size of the existing facility. They changed it from a planned upgrade to something that is more along the lines of a critical kind of replacement type plan. There will be some increased visual impact and some of that, I think is primarily from the height of the facility and the size. I'm comfortable that most of the other impacts seem to be pretty well mitigated. We spoke a little bit about some of the sound impact and the current, I think the analysis they did showed that there was an increase, but that was at maximum loads, which is not anticipated for most of the time and it also didn't count for the solid fence that will be around the substation. We looked at possible alternative locations and I was originally kind of wondering about the viability of the proposal number one and I thought that that might make a good location, but from hearing some of the testimony today, I think that would also create permanent visual impact and clearance of existing vegetation for homeowners that would be affected from that. So I'm not sure that that is a better alternative than this. And at the end of the day, there needs to be a substation relatively close to the community that will provide some power and I think this is, this is a good way to do it. So that's where I am at the moment.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner. Would anyone else like to speak to the motion? Commissioner Strake?
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate Commissioner Gardner's comments there and the proper form and mechanism for adding a further restriction to the properties that were purchased by MEA that are now adjoining. And I'm not sure exactly how to speak to that motion and so forth, so a little help here, but my intent here would be to make a motion on the floor that we add an additional restriction to the approval that would restrict the current properties that have been procured by the MEA, where they're going to do the replat for the 30 feet, allowing that replat to continue forward, but all remaining property to remain zoned residential and restricted only for residential use. Is there enough there to fight for a motion?
So if I am interpreting this correct, I believe Commissioner Strake, you are making a motion to add an additional condition of approval that the additional lot that was purchased by, procured by MEA would have to remain residential? Is that correct?
That's correct, but I would actually paraphrase because we heard, we've heard testimony that they not only bought one lot, but possibly two. And so my restriction would be to outside of the plant and outside of the, this lot, any lot remaining outside would remain residential and be restricted to residential use only. So if they bought one lot or two, it covers both of those two lots, if there are two.
Mr. McLaughlin, would you have a comment on that?
Madam Chair, I thought I did. I was going to start with some proposed wording for a condition of approval. Lot 93, Lot 93 shall not be used for the utility substation. A little bit of a flippant wording from what Mr. Strake was describing, but I think it got it, the substance of what he was seeking. The only problem is, is I got to find what the Lot 93 will be called after the replat because when they replat, it'll get a new legal description. But essentially, the, a lot to the, to the west, the neighboring lot immediately to the west of the substation after the replat should not, so it'll be Lot 1A. So Lot 1A, based on the replat, and I'll get the case number, shall not be used as a utility substation, rather than restricting the other lot to, so the other lot is not going to be a part of the conditional use in effect. So the, what Mr. Strake is going for is already achieved because that lot isn't really, can be included in the utility substation conditional use. The site plan is on Park Substation Lot 1 as it's platted now and 30 feet of Lot 93, the one with the house. They'll get new names when it's replatted, but the site still stays the same and the residential lot is the residential lot. And if they wanted to have utility substation for anything, it would require a new conditional use. But trying to play with the wording that was requested with a motion, future Lot 1A is, is not, shall not be used for the utility substation.
And I can go along with that, the wording that you've proposed there had no issue. And this is concurrent with and in agreement with the petitioner as we spoke during the testimony. Thank you. That would be my motion.
Just to clarify, both with myself and with staff and then possibly to complicate the matter after I clarify it. I'm potentially going to throw out language and staff, you can throw it out and it sounds like Commissioner Strake was okay with it, but would something along the lines of saying neighboring lots should not be used for a substation? Would that?
Thank you for the creative ideas, Ms. Bailey. I don't think that that will work and we can look in the chat to see what some of the other commissioners have suggested. Just because we could only deal with the properties that are within the description of this conditional use. So we couldn't go, say, to the lot to the north or to the south or to the east. We can only, there's just these two lots side by side that are included in this conditional use application. So your suggested wording just would run into the trouble of we can't, well, they're not a part of this, you know?
That makes sense. I don't want to get too far off the mark. So before I move off of the motion that was created by Commissioner Strake, I want to ask Commissioner Strake a question. Commissioner Strake, do you want me to keep your motion on the table or would you prefer I go to commissioners to get recommendations on a proposed motion before we form one? Since the motion was...
Thank you for the lotta, I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. I believe next in the queue is Commissioner Anderson. Was your comment related to this potential amendment?
No, to the main motion. And can you clarify if we're still talking to the main motion or to the amendment?
Currently, right now, we are talking about the amendment.
Okay, there's no comment at this time.
All right. Remind me if I don't come back to you afterwards to do so. Commissioner Looney, would you like to speak to a possible amendment?
I was just, really maybe going to either clarify or confuse a little bit, but could we say something like, the remaining portion of Lot 93 shall not be used for electrical substation infrastructure? And the intent there is that, which currently residential, we want it to get to state residential kind of thing, but that is part of this, of this case, that whole lot, as far as my understanding. Does that work for you?
Mr. McLaughlin?
I was, thank you. I was reviewing language. I found the approved preliminary plat and I was thinking about the language of that. Can you repeat your question? I'm sorry.
I've just maybe proposed something to clarify or confuse it, but with something to the effect of the remaining portion of Lot 93 shall not be used for electrical substation infrastructure or something to that effect.
That would be fine.
Or shall only be used as residential property.
We, through the chair, Mr. Strake, I didn't like the open ended, or the restrictiveness of that wording because, you know, there are other allowed uses in the R6 district and the future owner of the property may want to do any one of those.
Well, they may, but the future owner is not here and we're trying to protect the rest of the neighborhood. And at the same time, I don't want to see this become a parking lot either.
No, Mr. Strake, think about the wording. You proposed that it, that it can only be used for residential purposes, but the R6 district allows other uses other than residential purposes. And so that's why I flipped it to say that it shall not be used for the electrical substation, which gets at the intent of what you're, you're seeking.
And I'm just concerned that we're naive enough not to know all the elements of the electrical operation and that technically something that may not be part of the electrical substation, technically and verbally, by definition, and all of a sudden this property will be able to be used elsewhere. We did have commitment from the petitioner that is their intent, their desire that this property then for, thereby remained residential. Is that not incongruent or incongruity with the rest of the neighborhood? I mean, we don't have other, I know that R6 allows other uses, but the only use that we're seeing in this street, in this neighborhood right now, I believe, is residential.
Mr. Strake, I think that the wording that Commissioner Looney was proposing would be fine.
Okay.
As a, as a follow-up to possibly complicate this matter, and Mr. McLaughlin, please feel free to give the same answer you just gave to Commissioner Strake to me, which is, what if it says something, the remaining portion of Lot 93 shall not be used for any purpose or shall only be used for purposes permitted in R6 zoning?
That would be fine as well. Sands the electrical substation, which is also permitted and so...
So, nope.
So maybe sticking Mr. Looney's sharp wording there.
Yeah, I agree that so far, sorry, I don't want to get too out of order. Commissioner Looney's proposal as a comment, not as a motion, is currently stated. Moving further, Commissioner Krishna, did you have a comment on the amendment?
I have a bit of a question and maybe Francis can clarify. I think I'm just still wondering the purpose of the amendment. And my question is just that, you know, anything outside of the application that's in front of us would require a modification to the conditional use, is my understanding of what the process was. This amendment wouldn't necessarily restrict MEA from coming back and requesting a new conditional use for the Lot 93, is that correct? If that's correct, I think I'm wondering what the sort of mechanism of this amendment is or what this amendment would do beyond the conditional use process that we already have in place.
It would do, through the chair, Commissioner Krishna, the amendment would do nothing. It is, has no use to this. Everything you said was exactly correct.
And this is Commissioner Strake, and the purpose of the amendment was to restrict the usage of this lot now and in the future concurrent with the desires and agreement that the petitioner levered, that this property would continue and only be used for residential. Now, there's a number of uses, so it's a restrictive covenant or restrictive conditional use that's placed on this particular lot, unlike some of the other lots, that in order to appease and get around some of the issues we've had with the neighborhood and concerns, we are identifying the balance of this lot that MEA owns, that they have their, you know, that we've had a number of concerns with the community. Trust is a big factor and I'm trying to bridge a, some sort of compromise here within the community, you know, trust but verify, to limit the ability of that particular lot to be used for substation purposes or by any other purpose other than residential in order to conform with the agreement that MEA, not the agreement that the statement that MEA made.
All right.
Thank you.
I think we've kind of debated wording a little bit, but just I think Commissioner Gardner raises a good point in the chat that we should, in order to put anything in the finding, if we want to propose a motion at this time, now may be the good time to do it. Commissioner Gardner, is that what you are, are you proposing a motion?
Yes, I would like to put a motion on the table, following the language that Commissioner Looney suggested.
So for clarification, this is a motion to amend the main motion, which is to add a condition that the remaining portion of Lot 93 shall not be used for an electrical substation infrastructure. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Winchester, would anyone like to speak to the amended motion?
I'll speak to it to start. And my reading is that the motion is not strictly necessary, the condition is not strictly necessary for the reasons that Commissioner Krishna mentioned and that Francis mentioned as well, which is that any further revision or modification would require, I guess coming back to the commission again as well, but I think it might be useful to include this limitation nonetheless because it might be a period of time before MEA sees the need to expand or make any changes. And at some point in the future, I think having that condition expressly laid out will help drive discussion and really emphasize the intent and expectations that we've gone through today as it relates to the main motion. So for that reason, I support this motion to amend, that is.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner. Commissioner Looney?
Yes, I concur with Commissioner Gardner. And the testimony we heard today from the public, there definitely is a concern from quite a few people who are thinking that this is just the first step that MEA has. But I agree, normally this should not be required, but if it can help pacify some of those concerns, I think it could be worthwhile. How's that? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Looney. I also would like to speak that I will be voting in favor of this motion as well for those reasons. I think it's important to have it clearly on the record that this lot is not intended to be used for substation infrastructure. Similarly, this is going to go to the next comment. In my findings, if they're affirmative, it would be that the footprint of the substation infrastructure should not be expanded. That'd be a finding, not a motion, but I think those are things that we should be clear about our intent in the record. And so I appreciate that this motion to amend is showing that intent. And so for that reason, I'll be voting in favor. Seeing no one else wishing to speak to the motion to amend, I will call for a vote. Commissioner Strake?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Quinn? Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Krishna?
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
And I also vote in favor, that motion passes. We are now at our main motion. Commissioner Looney, were you in the queue for the pass motion or for the current one?
Oh, I think I was already called for the, for the pass motion. But I think that Commissioner Anderson is waiting.
Oh, Commissioner Anderson, thank you for reminding me, Commissioner Looney.
Yes, I'm speaking to the main motion. I'm having a hard time really coming to a conclusion on this one. I understand that the utility has a... equipment takes a larger footprint under current code. But I'm also having a hard time with the neighborhood compatibility, specifically with the first, like, day one to 15 or 20 years out before the vegetation is proven out to be effective and to provide a real neighborhood buffer. And I'm not sure how to mitigate that. The other problem that I had, but I think I've come to terms with, is the sound. But because of the slight increase of sound, but the fencing was not taken into account, and the fact that that max sound was only under highest loads, which is not a normal condition, I've come to terms with that portion of it. And I think that, going back to neighborhood compatibility, the immediate neighbors are rarely the ones that are most affected. I think beyond the immediate neighbors, the properties that touch or about this property, I don't think it has a big impact on the neighborhood. But the immediate neighbors have voiced a concern that it is problematic, and I don't believe that they're being nimby's. I think that it is a real concern to have a substantial, maybe not a substantial piece of infrastructure to the utility, but a pretty substantial piece of infrastructure for the neighborhood and compared to the neighborhood. And again, it's primarily for those first zero to 15 years. So I think I would like to see, you know, that first zero to 15 years mitigated somehow, or additional conversations with the immediate neighbors on how to come together and figure out how you can have this utility upgrade and make them happy, make the neighbors happy, whatever those would be. Happy within reason, I would add. That's all.
Would anyone else like to speak at this time? I guess I'll jump in the queue and say that I completely agree with Commissioner Anderson's finding. I think this project has, definitely has implications on primarily the people immediately abutting the property, and that is something that I don't think should be taken for granted. I also think it definitely wasn't helped by the fact that years ago, the property was cleared, and I know that left people -- it wasn't done properly. It doesn't give confidence to the neighbors of what's going to happen. It raises a lot of concerns, and I understand that. As far as long-term impacts, beyond those immediate neighbors, I don't have those same concerns. And for those reasons, I'm not having the same concerns about neighborhood compatibility that would have that reflection within the comprehensive plan. So that's my comment at this time. I'm going to turn to Commissioner Looney.
Yes, thank you. This is a very difficult decision. I know that it was really tough. I wanted to look at that site to the south quite a bit. I looked at the analysis for that, and I thought, God, it'd be sure great if that could work out. But it just seems like it just kind of flipped the impacts to other people. I mean, like, you can kind of debate whether it's underground overhead going for the lines between the two sites, but the actual site would have new neighbors around it, like three or four neighbors. It would be a whole different kind of group of people who are not even probably aware of what we're talking about right now, kind of thing. So it's really kind of kick can down the road. Someone's not going to be happy. So I did not, although I wanted that other site to be the solution, I don't think that's the really way to go. So this is tough, but I do, I will be supporting this with the, actually, the considerations that have already been mentioned here tonight for the findings. Thank you.
Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you for your comments, and I just wanted to add briefly that we heard a lot of discussion about concern of creep and what, you know, if this is approved, what that looks like for the future of this site. We did include an amendment, which I think will help emphasize the intent that the substation should not continue to be expanded, and that amendment doesn't preclude in and of itself the expansion within the existing site. But there are limitations in that any changes the plan will require come before the board and the public again. And also, as it relates to future growth, we did ask questions and hear from the petitioner that, although it's obviously hard to predict 15 or 30 years into the future, but any future development or needs for substations would need to be located where the load, the increased load is found where that load growth occurs, and that there's no expectation that that growth will occur in this area. So it seems very unlikely that 15 or 30 years from now, we'll see a dramatic need to expand this station, or this substation again as well.
Yes, that last comment resonated. A question regarding the ability in the future to expand the utility substation on this site, if it were approved at this point. And this is a question to staff. Is any expansion or addition outside of what is being approved in this conditional use, any type of improvements, beyond what is already on here, does that have to get a further conditional use? Or would some uses be considered minor and would be handled administratively?
Anchorage Municipal Code allows for minor amendments to occur under four possible scenarios. One is, you know, insubstantial changes to landscaping. That means if one variety of tree that was proposed isn't available and another similar acceptable replacement tree, you know, insubstantial changes to site circulation is another one. Less than 10% building envelope change is another one. For controversial cases, the department typically won't allow really any changes without going back through the same process that approved the original conditional use. But there are, the fourth criteria for approval of a minor amendment, which is a non-public hearing administrative approval of a change to conditional use, is insubstantial changes to the text of the application. So I've just off the top of my head laid out for you the four possible allowances in code for a minor amendment. So while I can't say that no change whatsoever could be approved without a public hearing, I can also tell you that the applicant has to build the site according to the plan that's up for review tonight. Any substantial changes to that would require, per code, them to have a community meeting and a public hearing and go through the same process that they've gone through to get to this point.
So let me rephrase my question, because I think you might have answered, but I'm not sure. How do we protect the community from ensuring that any scope increase or changes that might be made in the future are handled through a like-similar public hearing process? My concern is that something might happen administratively behind the scenes that the public's not aware of, that just, while this is, somebody determines it's not substantial, and they let something go through, and all of a sudden, there's a secondary tower smaller than the one that's in there now. Can't even see it from the road, but here comes another tower.
No, the site has to be built according to the plan that is before us today, and they could not propose another tower. To answer your specific question, you could place a condition or approval that any changes from the site plan shall require a public hearing, which would make the approval of any sort of minor amendment, you know, I guess it would be impossible or something. But this is a sort of -- okay, I should stop.
And I appreciate that comment, and I'm very much considering such a motion, because again, I'm trying to ensure that if this passes, that we put as much, we've listened to the testimony from the community, and it's been heard, but again, it's trust but verify. And there's lacking trust that's occurred here, and we've heard that over and over from this community back in June and tonight. So it's, again, I want to tighten up the edges, so to speak.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes, thank you. I understand Commissioner Strike's concerns, but I feel pretty confident that the second condition that we have before us, it says, "All construction shall substantially conform to the application narrative and plans on file with the planning department." I feel pretty confident that that is what should address the concerns that Commissioner Strike has. Thank you.
Can I respond?
Commissioner Strike?
Thank you. And I appreciate the comment, Commissioner Looney, but it's that word substantially. And what is substantial to one party isn't substantial to another. And we've seen this through, I will give an example, that there's different codes that happen at the federal level that all of a sudden allow a variance to an approval, that you may think that you approved a 70-foot cell phone tower, and the next thing you know, you have an 85-foot cell phone tower, because there's some abbreviated code in federal law that allows a change to occur. Or there's some sort of change that occurs at a regulatory level that allows a change. I want to show the public, and maybe it's lip service or not, but let's go through this process again if they deviate from this plan.
Seeing no one else in the queue right now, I am going to make a couple findings. Looking at Approval Criteria AMC 21.03.080D9, I find that the proposed use is appropriately located with respect to existing facilities and services. This is a substation that is taking the place of a current substation, so I find that that has been met. For Criteria 8, the proposed use is appropriately located with respect to transportation system. As we saw in our packet, this does not appear to have increased traffic, substantially different from what is currently in place. Criteria number seven, significant adverse impacts should be anticipated, impacts anticipated to result from use will be mitigated or offset to the maximum extent feasible. I think a lot of that was taken place, and I, as I said, in June, I would not have supported what was stated, but I appreciate that this one has additional landscaping around it. I appreciate that it has been greatly reduced in size. I appreciate that neighboring properties have been acquired to limit that burden. As far as the effects on ours, operation, traffic generation, lighting, noise, odor, dust, we have found in our reports that the proposed substation will have similar levels of noise and vibration impacts and lighting. As far as altering the character of the surrounding area, there is currently a substation in place. I understand that this one is slightly larger. However, I don't think it's going to severely alter the character of the surrounding area. And I'm going to leave my comments at that for now. I do want to say again that I really do appreciate the fact that this is impacting direct neighbors, and that is not something that should be kept lightly. I also want to add into findings that this approval today was based solely on the application that was brought in. It does not expect to, nor should it have, expansion in the future. And I believe Commissioner Strike is in the queue.
Yes, thank you. And to the comments, while I can appreciate the findings, there has not been a vote on the main motion. So I'm not sure that it's appropriate that we identify the type of findings and the comment with the approval. So I want to delineate from that here a moment. But I would like to motion to amend the main motion, and that is, I'd like to motion that any change from the site plan shall require a new public hearing. I understand that Commissioner Looney believes that this may be covered under Item Number Two, and the question is, it may be, but now we're assured it does. And so while it may not have, it may not be needed, it doesn't hurt. And I believe it adds clarity to the action that we're seeing here today. And I would also add that I would support the motion, the motion to amend, and I make these motions to amend in order to get me closer to a solution as we see this process moving forward. So.
So there is a --
Let's see, there's a second.
There is a motion to amend on the table. I believe we might need some clarification on that. Can you restate what your motion to amend will be?
Any changes from the site plan as provided this evening. Any changes, deviation in the future, shall require a review and public hearing.
All right, thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner O'Quinn, did you have a comment to the motion to amend that's currently on the floor? Commissioner O'Quinn, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was on mute. I just would like to reiterate Commissioner Looney's comments that the, Looney's comments that the conditional use process on its own is sufficient to address those concerns.
I'm going to interrupt you right there, Commissioner O'Quinn. Currently, we don't have to speak to the motion unless there is a second. If there's a second, then I'll take your comment. Is there a second? I'm going to give 30 seconds for a second, just because I know the delay of the procedure is tough here.
Without a second, I'll pull my motion.
Yep. Without a second, that motion is not on the floor. We now are still back at our main motion. And I guess I will just clarify that my comments were not so much findings as they were reasons why, right now, I'm leaning to approve the motion. Any other comments before we call for a vote? All right. Call for a vote. Commissioner Strike? Oh, sorry. Commissioner Gardner, sorry, Commissioner Gardner.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. Just one final thought to throw down. With respect to Commissioner Strike's concern, and again, talking about possible changes to this plan, I do, I just want to make a finding that I think that the second condition of approval will go a long way to make sure that what is ultimately put in place matches with what we approved today. I'm also comfortable that the process laid out in Title 21 for amendments to a CUP is adequate for that purpose as well. It does permit some minor amendments through an administrative process, but I think that is appropriate, that for really minor amendments, we don't have to go through a whole public hearing and process. And I think the minor amendments, as defined in code, are adequately -- And I think the minor amendments, as defined in code, are adequately limited to what are really truly minor and immaterial amendments that wouldn't and shouldn't require a hearing or further public process.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner.
That's my final finding.
And I'm also just going to ask a clarifying question from staff. We can make those findings while the motion's currently on the table, correct?
Yes.
Okay. At this point, I sometimes don't know. All right. Seeing no other questions in the queue, I'm going to pause for dramatic effect and to make sure no one types. All right, we are going to call for a vote. Commissioner Strike?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Krishna?
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
No.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That motion passes with one objection. I want to thank the public for coming. I know this probably wasn't the result you wanted, but I just want to let you know that normally, a public hearing doesn't take this long to resolve. It takes this long to resolve when we are truly listening to what you have to say. I know it doesn't always feel that way when the result doesn't come out the way you expected. But I do really want to thank you. I want you to know that without your comments back in June, we wouldn't have gotten to where we are today. So thank you so much. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion? Specifically, one to adjourn?
That would be Mr. Looney, correct?
Sorry, what was that?
That would be Mr. Looney to do, correct? This is his last meeting.
Actually, I have some probably bad news for you guys. You may have to quit up with me a little longer. I got a call and said that I have to hang around a little longer, kind of thing, but I'll see how long it takes for you to get rid of me, kind of thing. So a few more weeks, we'll see.
All right. Also, I just want to point out why I have people on the phone that I want to thank, Commissioner O'Quinn, for the most enthusiastic motions and ayes and noes. I've never heard someone sound more depressed when they're making a vote. But we have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Looney, a second by Commissioner Winchester. Hearing no objections. I know this wasn't an easy meeting tonight, and I want to thank you all, especially for all the time and attention and questions you all asked. I really like working with a body that pays so much attention to this and cares so much about all these issues, so thank you. We are adjourned.